I'd like to call to order the San Carlos City Council meeting for July 11, 2016. Tonight, our pledge of allegiance will be led by our mayor for the day, Christopher Fromm, who's a student at Tierra Linda Middle School. So Christopher, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and I'm going to let Christopher take over in just a moment to run the first part of our meeting, but before we get started tonight, I think many of you may have noticed in coming into City Hall today that our flags are flying at half-staff, and that is obviously in response to a series of events that are happening around our nation. We, you know, are all first and foremost Americans, and many of us, our thoughts are with our fellow citizens and with those who've lost their lives and their families and communities over the past week. So I'd ask, before we get started tonight, if everyone could join me in a moment of silence out of respect for those who've passed away. Thank you. Okay, Christopher, the meeting is yours.
Item three, does anyone have changes to the order of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, there's no changes from staff this evening, but I believe in front of you is a request from a member of the public to pull item eight I, if I'm not mistaken.
Do we have a report from closed session?
There's no report from closed session, Mr. Mayor.
Council Communications and Announcements. We'll start with Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had two items tonight. One is I'm disappointed that Mr. Grisilli is not calling in from Italy. I can tell the process works quite well. The only problem is you have to be up in the middle of the night. And I do want to thank the IT staff for arranging that. It actually worked quite well. I did have one request. I wanted to see whether or not there was interest in making a small amendment to the budget that was recently passed. This was an amendment that I was going to offer when the budget came up for approval earlier in June. It involves the city authorizing funds to pay for half of the sidewalk repairs in San Carlos. Unfortunately, I had stepped away from the dais to go to the bathroom, and by the time I came back, the budget had been moved and approved. So I'd like to ask that we agendize that as a separate item at an upcoming meeting.
Thank you. Now, Ron.
So we'll ask if there's other council members who would like to see that added to the agenda.
I will.
So we have Matt? No? Okay.
Through the chair, if I may. Since I was originally planning on making this amendment when the item was already before the council as an agendized item, I know that our tradition currently is to have the necessity of three votes to put an item on the agenda, but I'd ask that this item be treated as what it should have been, which is an opportunity to make a separate motion when the budget item was before us, which I think would only require two people.
I appreciate the suggestion. I'm going to decline it at this time, and I think, you know, you've got one other supporter on this particular item, and in the future, potentially, we could get three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Then, for the record, I would like to have it noted that both during that budget meeting and since then, there have been at least two or three occasions when either a staff member or a council member was out of the room, and the meeting was delayed until that person came back, and I do not feel that I was treated appropriately in this context.
All right, so noted.
Thank you. Now, Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. About the only activity I was involved in that involved city business over the last couple of weeks was I was a member of the Grand Boulevard Task Force, which is actually a three-county task force of representatives in San Mateo, San Francisco, and Santa Clara Counties to look at ways to improve and maximize the use of what we call the corridor, meaning El Camino, from San Francisco to San Jose. I won't go into a lot of the details, but there is a very large movement to concentrate transit-oriented housing along the corridor. There are a lot of projects that are ongoing. There are going to be a lot of workshops in the future, and there is a housing toolkit that's been put together for a lot of the cities, and there are apparently nearly 650 opportunity sites that have been identified along the corridor from San Francisco to San Jose where about 50,000 affordable housing units can be built. One statistic that just doesn't go away that I was reminded of was that in the last six years, about 55,000 jobs have been created in San Mateo County. In that time, we've built 2,500 housing units, which is about a, I think it's about a 22-to-1 ratio of jobs to housing units built. So as everybody knows, there is a huge ongoing and continuing and will continue housing crisis. The other thing that was noted was that there are about 180,000 people every day that drive to San Mateo County for their jobs who do not live here, and that's one of the reasons that our freeways are so crowded. So one of the big charges of the task force is to have all the counties work together and find a way to, collaborative way to build that housing, and it was a very productive meeting. These are public meetings, by the way. They happen every quarter. The next one will be at the end of September, and I encourage anybody who is interested, you can contact me or the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Cameron.
Why don't we go with Matt?
Matt.
Thank you. I did not attend any meetings on behalf of the city. However, I did have two occasions to take note of some things, and I wanted to bring them up here from the dais so that they are noted by the staff. The first one was talking with one of our citizens downtown on Laurel Street, right after watching a fellow who was probably about 6'2" trying to walk down Laurel Street and having to duck every time he got to one of the restaurants that have the umbrellas or canopies. This, to me, is becoming a problem, and this is what the citizen had stopped me and wanted to talk about, was the proliferation of tables that are coming really close to the edge of where they ought to be, that you've got waitstaff at restaurants walking into the sidewalk area because the tables are taking up right to the brick line that we have there. So between the umbrellas or the canopies and then the way the tables are being arranged and the waitstaff is waiting on them, it looks to me like, and this citizen was pointing this out, it's becoming a disruption to foot traffic downtown, and I think that's something that needs to be enforced and taken a look at. The other item was from being at coffee one morning and watching the Sheriff's Department, who we're under contract with for our police, respond to what was, turned out to be, I guess, a false alarm for a bank robbery at the Bank of America. And while we all had a good laugh about it, the patrons at the plantation, one of the things that disturbed me that I saw was officers getting out of their vehicles, engaging their long-armed rifles, and walking down the street when there was no effort made to stop traffic, either foot traffic or vehicular traffic. And in fact, while all of this was going on, cars were going down Laurel Street past the scene of what was, could have been a very dangerous situation if there had been open gunfire. So I think a word with the Sheriff's Department about that situation would be in order because, to me, that did not appear to be safe for the general public. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few pictures that I wanted to share from some community events over the last couple of days. If Crystal, you mind bringing those up? So I had an opportunity to join the Public Works Department at the City of San Carlos booth at the farmer's market on July 3, and it was the second time I've done this kind of Ask the Mayor session for a couple hours, and I have to say, I really enjoyed it. There was a big turnout again, and I'm going to try and keep it up about once a month for the rest of the year. For those of you who came out, I really appreciate all the feedback, all the great ideas, and for those with specific requests, I've forwarded all of them to our staff, and we'll be following back up. So if you didn't catch me this time, I'll be publicizing it again for a time in August, and I may try and bring along some of our other regional elected officials from, I think we're trying to work out a date to have Supervisor Don Horstly join me in August. So look forward to that. Can I click that on and do that? I had, this is a fun photo, I had the opportunity to join in the 36th Annual Sunnydale July Fourth Block Party, which was an amazing event. I had heard about it for many years, and this year I was invited to help lead the parade. That's me with my wife and the king and the queen of the parade. This is a block party that goes from 2:00, you know, all night. The entire neighborhood is out. They recognize all the new families that have moved in. It was very heartwarming, and I really appreciate my hosts. This gentleman here, his name is Vince, I forget his last name, but he's a professor at the College of Notre Dame. But I just, you know, I just wanted to thank everybody for inviting me and my family. My kids had a great time, too. And then on Friday, Christopher and I got to spend the day together. We did a tour of City Hall. We went to a lot of other events and saw a lot of other city facilities, but we started the day at the Redwood City Fire Department to recognize the promotion ceremony for two Redwood City Fire, or two San Carlos firefighters, who are now part of the Redwood City-San Carlos Fire Department. One is Chuck Lacks, who many of us know, who's served in San Carlos for over two decades. He was promoted from captain to battalion chief. The other is a gentleman named Chris Cottle, who was promoted to captain. It was a really great event. There were a lot of firefighters there, as well as their family members and elected officials, and, you know, my congratulations to Chuck, to Chris, and to their families. And that is all I have tonight.
Thank you. Now, we will move on to 5B, Staff Comments on City Administrative Business. Now, Mr. Malteby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick update this evening for the public on Line 147. PG&E continues to work on the transmission line running down Britton Avenue. Over the last couple of weeks, they have excavated three different sites to do some calibration testing of the pigging data that they have, so they actually dig down and unwrap the pipe and take a look, and they x-ray it and do some other tests on it to make sure that the data that the remote control probe was gathering is accurate. So they've dug up those sites, they've done the testing. Their engineers are going to take a week or two to evaluate that data and rerun their model of the data that was conducted with the pig, and then they'll determine whether or not they need to do any repair work at that site or any other locations along Line 147. So for the time being, those spots that have been excavated are covered over with metal plating, but they'll remain excavated for a couple of more weeks.
Thank you. Now, we have presentations on Proclamations to Retiring Commissioners. Susan Todd on Parks and Recreation and Culture. Scott Marsters on Planning. And Frank Adiego on Transportation and Circulation.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that, I believe Susan and Scott are here this evening? If you could come up to the front, and I have some proclamations for you. So these are proclamations that are recognizing Susan and Scott's long service on our couple citizen advisory commissions, and I know that Scott, in addition to serving on the Planning Commission, has served on the Economic Development Commission for many years, but we have a great spirit of volunteerism in the City of San Carlos, and that can mean, you know, coaching your kid's soccer team, it can mean just, you know, holding a block party on your neighborhood, but it can also mean getting involved directly in the city by joining a local commission. I know that most of our council members have served on commissions. I've served on a commission, so I know that it can be long and sometimes thankless work, but it's really important. It's an opportunity for citizens to directly connect with the public on a particular topic of interest and go very deep on that topic, understand it from all the different angles, and be able to give advice to the city staff and to policymakers about what the right thing to do is. So I'm very pleased to be able to commend you both for your service, and I will read part of these proclamations. So first, to Susan Todd. So this proclamation reads in part, "Whereas Susan Todd passionately advocated for accessible playground design and features in the renovation of Burton Park, which became the fully, the first fully-inclusive playground in San Mateo County; and whereas Susan Todd's six years of dedicated service as a member of the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Commission represents and embodies the city, excuse me, the San Carlos traditions of volunteerism and service to the community, now therefore be proclaimed that I Cameron Johnson, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, do hereby express sincere thanks and appreciation to Susan Todd for her contributions on the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Commission." Congratulations.
Would you like to say a word to?
To Mr. Mayor and the council, thank you for the opportunity the last six years. I really had a blast seeing not only my children grow up in those six years and have more kids, but the joys of interacting with the community at a different level. So thank you, and see you guys around town.
Now, Scott, who, you know, has contributed to our city in many different ways, including his tenure on the Planning Commission. This proclamation reads in part, "Whereas during his tenure on the Planning Commission, Scott Marsters made invaluable imprints on some of the most significant projects in the City of San Carlos, including the General Plan and Zoning Ordinance, the Transit Village, Wheeler Plaza, the Landmark Hotel, and Meridian 25. And whereas Scott Marsters' six years of dedicated service as a member of the Planning Commission represent and embodies the San Carlos traditions of volunteerism and service to the community, now therefore be proclaimed that I Cameron Johnson, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, do hereby express sincere appreciation and thanks to Scott Marsters for his contributions on the Planning Commission and dedication to the community of San Carlos." Congratulations, and thank you.
I started serving on the Railroad Land Use Stakeholders Commission 14 years ago, and I spent a good time there, and six years on EDAC, and six years on the Planning Commission, and it was worth every minute of it, and it was very enjoyable. There were a lot of people who had a lot of really good things to say, and I just want to thank you all for allowing me to participate in that. Thank you.
Can I just add a comment? There are a couple of former Planning Commissioners in the audience tonight. I believe Don Eaton was on the Planning Commission many decades ago. So was I. Planning Commission is not an easy job. You handle a lot of things that the council never sees. You have to get very deep into the language of ordinances and look at all the things that go into putting new codes together and that sort of thing, and approvals that can be quite contentious. There's a subsection of the Planning Commission, it's now called what RDRC, and when I was on it, it was called the Architectural Review Committee, but it was, they were essentially the same thing. And it's very important work. It doesn't often get the recognition that is due, but I just want to say or give my thanks to Scott for his service. I thought you did an outstanding job. Didn't always take popular stances, but always came up with some good ideas, a lot of things people never thought about. Scott and I have met so often at, you know, at Pete's or Starbucks or my house, and we've talked a lot on the phone over the years about a lot of projects, and San Carlos is a better place because of his time on the Planning Commission. And again, thanks to Susan as well for her service.
Item seven, Public Comment for Items Not on the Agenda. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the post-agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. And we have three speakers tonight. The first one is Michelle Briggs.
Good evening.
I apologize in advance for my topic, but I'm here to talk about the unfortunate rodent issues that we're having in our community. As I'm sure you guys are aware, last summer, there was quite a public outcry over the number of rats that people were seeing. There was somebody who commented about seeing 15 in a tree, actually, who stopped counting at 15 in the tree. There were people who talked about seeing the midday running across the power lines on Britton. There was somebody else who talked about clans of them on Dartmouth Ave. Now, vector control got involved. They jumped on it right away. They held a meeting. There were probably 50 or 75 of us who attended. And then I know they did a census, and they did conclude that we do have an active population here, and they've put in some measures to try to eradicate it. I realize it's not a quick fix, but a year later, it doesn't seem like there's been a notable improvement. It actually seems like it's possible that things may have actually gotten worse. There are a flood of threads right now on Nextdoor about the issue. One person started a thread taking a poll on how many rats people have killed in the last six months. Somebody else posted something last week called "I Smell a Rat," and there have been 65 comments on it in just four days. And I was walking my dog at 7:30 in the morning, and one scampered only five feet away from me. I mean, it was broad daylight at that point, and I was with a dog, and it scampered right by and ran into the wheel well while I was on Chestnut Street, and our dog walker at noon saw one, and she's not from San Carlos, so she was shocked and left me a note about it, and I unfortunately wasn't. And, you know, when you start seeing them in the middle of the day, like, they are everywhere, and we all recognize that, but when you start seeing them repeatedly in daylight, you know you have a serious problem, and they carry diseases, they carry mites, and they also affect our quality of life. We pay a lot of money to live here. I don't actually go out into my backyard in the evening. And we have friends and neighbors who hosted a dinner with their pastor, and while they were eating, one scampered along the fence line right in back of his head, and that really is humiliating. My last point is, this could actually also start to affect our real estate prices. I have friends who were moving from San Francisco, asked me what I thought about San Carlos. I told them all the wonderful things about it and felt obligated to mention this. Somebody on Nextdoor even actually commented to somebody who was surprised about it and said, "You mean your Realtor didn't tell you about the roof rat situation in San Carlos?" So I know vector control is involved, but what I'm begging the city to do is to really make this a priority. I don't think that we're going to successfully eradicate this problem without the firm commitment and leadership from the city. When I mentioned to vector control that maybe they could do a poster or a postcard mailing to residents to kind of let them know what they should be doing, they said they didn't have the budget for it. So I'm really asking the city to take a firm stance on this. If you actually want volunteers for a task force, I'm willing to dedicate as much time and energy to solving this problem on behalf of the city as I can.
All right. Thank you for your comments. If I could ask, staff, do we know the next time that vector control is planning, usually they give an annual update, is that correct, and when their next scheduled to come back before us?
I don't have that information this evening, Mr. Mayor, but we can talk to them and get a presentation scheduled for the council in late summer, early fall. I will just add that, you know, obviously, most of what we're talking about here is private property, but in terms of the city's efforts, we will be doing another contract to bait the creeks again this year, so that will be happening again in our effort to control this rat population on public property.
All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Our next speaker will be Scott Marsters.
I might be here again. I'm not used to being on this side of the dais. What I wanted to talk about tonight was the Meridian 25 project, and I'm coming back to you as a former Planning Commissioner, and talking about the, it's on the agenda, isn't it? What? It's on the consent, so I'm not going to be able to talk about it, am I? I think I'll send an email.
If I may ask, council, citizens are constrained to not talk about things during this section that are on the agenda?
That's right. The public comment is just supposed to be for items not on the agenda, and our protocol and practice has been, when someone wants to speak on something on the consent calendar, that the item is pulled at their request or at the request of the council.
Even if it's perhaps, I don't know what Scott was going to say, but just my own edification, even if it is perhaps tangentially related?
You know, I guess there could be an inquiry of that, but I, when he introduced it as Meridian 25, I just happened to know that it was on the agenda.
Thanks.
And our last speaker will be Sarah Holler.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I wanted to speak this evening about traffic on San Carlos Avenue and the dangers that we are being presented with in the neighborhood. I currently go to the San Carlos Adult Community Center three mornings a week. This morning, I was thrilled to see a police officer on a motorcycle, actually having a human presence in the neighborhood. People are speeding, running yellow and red lights. I recognize our police officer's presence and our police force has changed in the last few years, and now we have the Sheriff's Department. However, I am strangely one of the more spry people going to the Adult Community Center, and I'm very concerned about the amount of people that run lights, that speed, and act like they're going on an expressway ramp. I know it's a 25 mile per hour zone. I know that we have a big sign out now that says you are approaching a senior center, but I think that we need to have a, or I'd like to ask what we can do in the community to help increase safety, especially for people who might be having less mobility. And I appreciate the time. I appreciate the opportunity to express this concern. I know that there are a lot of people that are frightened in the neighborhood, and if anyone has comment on that, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks very much for your comments. I will note that one of the things that we recently added to the budget was $1 million for pedestrian safety to be spent over the next two years. Where that exactly will be spent is yet to be determined, but during the discussion, we talked about San Carlos Avenue specifically, as well as Holly Street. So we appreciate the comments.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I was trying to remember, did we or did we not also ask the Transportation and Circulation Commission to review ideas for trying to address some of these concerns? And if not, maybe it's something we should do.
I don't specifically recall.
Yeah, I think if memory serves, Councilmember Olbert, we had said as part of the $1 million that were set aside, that that would go back to the TNC Commission, and I remember you saying basically what you just said now, that we'd be looking for ideas about these particular problems, because the council wanted to, didn't want to just focus on those two identified areas, though that was the primary concern, but they wanted to hear about any other potentials.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak for items not on the agenda?
Please come forward. You can fill out a speaker card afterwards. Good evening, and if you could just...
And my concern is also traffic and cars speeding. Britton Avenue is an absolute disaster if you try to cross the street from one side to the other. There are no pedestrian crossways. There is a park that people use, and they need to cross the street to continue on the trail from the left to the right or the right to the left. And there have been several very serious accidents. One was a fatality on that street, which I'm sure you're all aware. Another accident on that street was a car coming down Britton Avenue, ran into a house. No one fortunately was injured when this happened. But the speeding has not stopped, and the traffic has increased. The traffic is traffic. You have to put up with it. But we really shouldn't have to put up with these cars speeding down Britton Avenue. And the situation is such that the Britton Avenue has two curves in its path. And if you walk up Britton Avenue as a pedestrian, there is points on Britton Avenue where you cannot see if a car is coming because of the slope. And cars coming down Britton Avenue come down on such a -- there's such a decline in the street, an incline, that it's really quite treacherous. And I would like to have something done about that if possible. It's a very serious situation, and I've heard many, many complaints from my neighbors about it. There have been calls made to the sheriff's office, and I don't know where else, but I'd like that looked into if at all possible. Thank you. I'd appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments.
Come on up.
Good evening. Tom Dierlon. I was a traffic commissioner for 10 years back in the '90s of this fair city. I know you're only supposed to be on for nine years, but somebody fell asleep. I got there for 10 years, and Part V's was delighted to see me go. But even back then, the senior center was a real debacle. And we changed the width of the median to make it so you could rest if you couldn't cross all four lanes at one time, at one light change. But we've also coordinated the lights that in the morning, they're all green to expedite traffic to 101. And that, I think, encourages the expedition of traffic, but that word by definition means that in many cases, they're not doing 25 miles an hour. And it's really a sticky wicket. I mean, we've dealt with this thing now for 20-plus years, and I'm not sure what the -- we even talked about putting an underpass or an overpass, a tunnel or a bridge to accommodate walking across the street, which, of course, in this day and age, would be economically prohibitive. But it's a difficult situation, and it's just as bad or worse today than it was back in the '90s when we were dealing with it. So it's going to be tough to, but it's obviously something that's very necessary, especially now that we've rehabbed the entire center. And we're not able to buy the land around there to create a parking place, a parking lot that would accommodate the seniors so they could simply walk across the street, not San Carlos Avenue, but something that would not even have to walk across the street, but that would be adjacent to the senior center itself. So it's -- of course, eminent domain's an interesting word in this day and age, but yeah, it's something that certainly has been needed to be addressed for the last 20, 30 years, actually, ever since the senior center was built there. It's a shame when they built it there, they weren't able to accommodate the parking as well.
Thank you for your comments.
You have one more person in the back and one right here.
Please come on up, Matt.
My name is Sarah Kirchner. I live on Cedar, and I'm going to just add on to what's been said about traffic. I'm very concerned about the traffic, and I wonder if we could have maybe speed traps or something where citizens might know that there could be an officer waiting at the next corner if they're speeding. Cedar has become a raceway. I can hear the cars screeching down Cedar. I'm on the 600 block, and I can hear them screeching down the street, and it's frightening during the day. It's a school. The central middle is right there, and yet cars are speeding like crazy. And I worry about the bikers, the kids on bikes, people pulling out of their driveways, and just in general, the speed is outrageous. And I've actually called on it recently because I'm concerned. But I wonder if there is some way that patrol or something could be set up periodically so that it kind of scares people, like, you know, you see that cop is always at that particular freeway, you know, you know to slow down, but maybe they don't know whether they'll get caught or not, and it'll slow them down. And it isn't just Cedar. I've been on Cherry, and people blow through a stop sign many times, right on Chestnut or Walnut or wherever they happen to be. And then they look at me like I'm crazy because I'm going down Cherry and I don't have a stop. So it's a real concern, and I'm really, really worried about someone being hurt. And I'd just like to add that to what's been said. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Was there one other gentleman who wish -- please come on up. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm Daniel Tinter. I live on Emerald Street. I didn't intend to speak tonight. I'm here for the issues to be raised later on in the meeting, but given the opportunity. Our street was recently repaved, beautiful blacktop, and so my issue is more of a kind of an annoyance thing compared to other things discussed here so far. Somebody down the street needed a new sewage line put in, and the city came out and sprayed white paint all over the brand-new blacktop and, you know, to where the pipes were and all that. And it's a permanent paint. And I'm just wondering what the city policy is about that. I'm seeing this city graffiti more and more now, now that I'm paying attention to it. It's an annoying problem, and I think one that would be easy to correct rather than spraying black paint over the white paint. I don't know. What are your comments on that?
Well, I appreciate the comment. Our Public Works Director is sitting behind you, and perhaps you guys could have a chance to talk about it offline. He would be the expert on painting on the streets. So thank you for your comments.
Would anyone else like to address comments for items not on the agenda? Item eight, approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public requests specific items to be removed for separate action. Now, would anyone like to remove an item?
So, Mr. Mayor, we have one request to remove item eight I, so we'll do that. Is there any other requests?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval excluding --
Pardon me, Mark. Did you -- Matt, did you have?
Yeah, I wanted to remove item F.
Okay. Items I and F. Is there anyone else wishing to remove an item from the consent calendar?
I have no requests.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the consent calendar absent items F and I.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, we have some ordinances that are set for adoption.
Oh, then I would also like to move that we adopt ordinance number 1507, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending the zoning map to change the site from general commercial slash industrial, GCI, zoning district to planned development, PD, zoning district, and approving the associated planned development plan for the Meridian 25 office project at 821, 837, 853, 871, and 877 Industrial Road and 831 Branston Road, APNS 046140090, or dash 100, dash 110, dash 120, dash 130, and dash 140. And also adopt ordinance number 1508, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, approving a development agreement with WHPV Tanklage SPE LLC for the Meridian 25 office project. And finally, adopt ordinance number 1509, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 13.08.160, sewer service charges and fees.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Overt?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. I think we're going to excuse our mayor for the day with our thanks. Christopher, thank you very much for running the beginning of the meeting. If we can give him a round of applause. And I really enjoyed spending the day with you on Friday, and good luck with the rest of your summer, and good luck at Tirolinda this year. Okay, let's take our consent items now, and so we can take them in order. So Matt, you polled item F, is that correct?
I did.
So we'll consider item F, 8F, adopt a resolution accepting a $25,000 donation from Parks and Recreation Foundation, and subsequently appropriating $25,000 for the purchase of a soccer goal storage and basketball backstop padding at Highlands Park. Ms. Newby.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Amy Newby, acting Parks and Recreation Director. A while back, the Parks and Recreation Foundation approached staff, letting us know that they were interested in funding a project specifically at Highlands Park. Our athletics and sports staff and our park staff got together and identified two items at Highlands that we were in need of updates and repairs. The first is a cement footing or pad to store the large soccer goals, similar to how Crestview, how they're stored at Crestview. And the other one is just new baseball backstop padding at Highlands North and South or Qantas and Rotary Fields.
All right. Thank you. Matt, did you have any questions or?
No, I had no questions. I just wanted it off the consent calendar so that the foundation would get proper recognition, is all. Yeah.
All right. Is there any public wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? So I'll concur with our appreciation and thanks to the Parks and Recreation Foundation for raising funds to improve our parks, and it sounds like a great addition to Highlands Park. And with that, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
This is for resolution number 73. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Overt?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. We'll move on to item eight I, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with the San Mateo County Transit District for vehicular parking on the east side of El Camino between Howard Avenue and Central Avenue. And I know our former mayor, Don Eaton, asked that this be polled. Do we want to have some brief staff comments for context or?
That sounds good.
Okay. Al, you want to come on up?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Members of the city council. So as noted, this is a lease for the property along the railroad tracks south of Howard down to about Duncan Motors. And the intent of this lease is to provide some extra parking in the South Laurel area. A while ago, we visited with the neighborhood surrounding the South Laurel area. We invited some people to a community meeting down there, and people are starting to express real concerns with parking that is overflowing from the popularity of some of the new businesses that we have down there. And as you know, the lion's share of parking in that area is all street parking. It's we don't have parking lots like we do in the historic core of our downtown. And so due to that fact, a lot of the employees are starting to park in the neighborhood. We did do recent parking counts. We had done some a couple of years ago, and so we had some empirical information to show which streets were being impacted during peak hours like lunch and dinner. And we just recently redid those numbers, and we noticed an uptick in parking in some of the residential neighborhoods. So one of the things that came out of that meeting, that was a very well-attended meeting at Wyd Oak School, maybe there was 100 people there, and one of the things that the neighborhood mentioned was that, you know, we need to solve the employee parking problem. There was even suggesting it looking at other places like the railroad corridor. And so the idea is that if the restaurants and other businesses continue to be successful in that area, and as we see new development occur, we will need to address this parking situation in some way. You'll get a report in just a few minutes about the Greater East San Carlos residential permit parking program, and that's been very successful. And one of the things that the neighborhood over there is interested in is a neighborhood permit parking program. And so we believe that moving in this direction to find a way so that some of the employees can have eight-hour parking for free. Of course, they would need to pay a nominal fee for permits to do that, but right now, they're moving their cars all around, and employees tend to park again for much longer periods of time than a customer would. And so the intent of this is to encourage those employees first to be the parkers right across the street in that area and get them out of the neighborhoods. And then later on, that would leave us some flexibility in applying a residential permit parking program in the area. And I'm available to answer any questions.
All right. Thanks, Al. Any questions for Al?
I do, thanks. Al, we have an idea of how many employees -- do we have an idea how many employees will take advantage of it potentially?
You know, we don't yet. All we know is that there's a lot of business down there, a lot of restaurants. I mean, I think that in talking to folks at town, I think they have about 20 employees just at town, just to give you sort of a scale of magnitude. Of course, the restaurants, you know, they have peak hours, so they have staff turnover throughout the day. But again, generally, about 20 just for that one restaurant.
So if we enter into a lease, it looks like it's a renewable lease.
Yeah. So what we're proposing is a five-year lease to start, and anything more than five years would need to go to the SAM Trans board. And to move this forward, we're bringing you this first five-year lease, and then if you're interested, we can ask them to go back and increase it for options beyond that.
So what happens if it turns out to be a miserable failure and, like, three people park over there, and we have a five-year lease? What do we do? Do we have a right to renegotiate the lease, to abandon the lease?
Yes, we can abandon the lease. SAM Trans would let us out of the lease. I think that, yeah, it would take some time to implement this. And the other thing is, you know, we would be implementing this without a parking permit program in the neighborhood. So really, the full benefit of this land wouldn't be realized until we installed a parking permit program in the neighborhood. And again, we haven't really gotten that far with it, but we knew if we were going to do that, we would have to find somewhere else for employees and others to park.
So the lease would be in place before the parking permit programs in place?
Yes.
And how long do you think it'll take to put the parking permit program in place?
You know, I think it took us about six to nine months to put the one in the Greater East San Carlos neighborhood together. It was our first time doing it. We have a lot more experience now, but I'd say that's a fair timeframe to work with the neighborhood and the council on that.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ron. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just actually a couple of observations, not questions for staff. I just wanted to share with my colleagues that even back in 2011, when I was knocking on doors, running for this seat in that area of San Carlos, it was a fairly common complaint that people brought to my attention, that they were residents brought to my attention. They were very concerned about the impact, even at the time, that business-related parking was having on residential parking. And I can imagine it's only gotten worse since then. And I can imagine it's only gotten worse since then. I'd also like to just make the observation too that I've, I've good-naturedly teased Jeff Malpe ever since I joined the council that we often talk about encouraging commercial development on Laurel Street because it's a big part of our, our community to have that kind of venue. And I keep bugging him about we shouldn't always be pressing the north side of Laurel Street key on that particular piano. But part of the reason he's always countered to me that, that we're limited in terms of what kind of growth and development we can have on the south part of Laurel Street is the lack of parking. And so in my mind, anything that helps address that, even in a short-term basis, while we work out some longer-term solutions is something definitely worth giving serious consideration to.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Any other questions for Al? If not, now's the time for public comment. I have one speaker card, our former mayor, Don Eaton. Don, please come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilman. This particular parcel of land, I'd like to kind of ask some questions about and see, maybe just to get you to think about a little bit. Question number one would be, how many employees do you actually believe are going to park there and in a gravel parking lot, take a sprint across El Camino for some of them and walk as far as a couple or three or four blocks occasionally? I just don't think it's going to be that big a success, speaking from 40 years of experience here. Secondly, I'm wondering how many restaurant patrons will even park there? I kind of doubt very many at all would do that same exercise. Thirdly, I'm wondering what is really the highest and best use of that land that has sat vacant for longer than anyone in this room has been here? And blending that, that query with the concept of a grand boulevard that has been promoted for several years and asking you to think heavily about such a concept, also asking you to think about the job of a city councilperson to create community gathering places, to create, in this case, community in the form of a proposed 36-old, high-quality miniature golf course that would benefit not just this community, people of all ages, but people in surrounding communities. So in my mind, it kind of becomes a question of, do you satisfy a few people in an immediate neighborhood who are actually complaining about people parking on a public street, albeit in front of their home, and I understand all that whole drill? Or do you satisfy literally hundreds or thousands by creating a positive influence in your community? To that end, I would ask that the council put this particular item, just continue it for at least 90, maybe 120 days, maybe even a little longer than that. I would not ask you to do that in perpetuity. The reason that this project has not gone forward is the control of the land. And who controls that land? SAM Trans, of course. During the past three plus or minus years, I've been working on this project and most of you are aware of it. I've had personal conversations with just about all of you about this. The main issue has been, again, control of that land. SAM Trans, with no personal animosity to anyone who works there, has been this giant bureaucracy and there is one excuse after another. And I would say to you that since I found out just today that the contract for the electrification has just been awarded last week, I've contracted, contacted the real estate manager at SAM Trans and they've told me they will give me the name and contact person of that, that company who was contracted to do this. And the main issue seems to be access for electrification, which is actually, takes place up on the tracks itself, but they just need access from four or five spots, which they have admitted they have at least five spots. And I would like to see how that could work into this concept of perhaps having access from the parking lot itself, because the miniature golf course, of course, has to be well-parked. And if that's possible, then I'd like to work with them and then proceed with the land lease for this community development myself. If it is not possible, I would be happy to hop off the bandwagon and allow for whatever use the city deems necessary or whatever use SAM Trans deems necessary. So that's my goal tonight, is to come to ask you if you would be willing to continue this project. Summertime schedules of the council and my own summertime schedules would make at least the end of September the best option. And if a little more time after that could be granted, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment on this item? Hearing none, we can have a bit of discussion, given Don has put a proposal on the table or a request on the table about continuing it. We could also entertain a motion. Let me see. Matt?
First, I'd like to see if there's gonna, I'm not going to make a motion to approve it, but before we have any discussion, I'd go for a motion.
Did you want to share any thoughts or?
Okay, if that's the way you want to do, run it, that's fine by me. For me, I, I am not happy about this plan for parking at this site. When businesses went away years ago on that side of the El Camino because we were doing the Great Sep and they were doing construction and so forth, and, you know, there are a number of businesses that went out, lumberyard, restaurant, some other things. When that kind of thing happens, it's, it's like an amputation in a way when it comes to business. It ruins the, the feel of El Camino and, and the way El Camino is a, is a business district when you only have business on one side of the street. And, you know, businesses tend to feed on each other and help each other out and that sort of thing. And when you wipe it all out on one side, it hurts. And I, and I think, you know, if, if anyone that's been around long enough can recognize that, that it's, it's difficult for these businesses that are left on the west side of El Camino. And we've seen, you know, change of ownership, change of businesses and so forth, some that have worked very well, but some that have just really struggled to survive. And I think it has to do with the energy, if you will, being taken away on one side of the street. So a five-year contract for parking at that site, I think, is a, is a poor idea. The second reason I'm not too keen on the idea is because we're dealing with SAM Trans. And if you look at, how did SAM Trans get that land to begin with? Well, that goes all the way back to the creation of California and the laying out of railroads and property being set aside for railroads. And yet now we've got, as Mr. Eaton deemed them, a giant bureaucracy controlling that land. It was never intended to be controlled that way, I don't believe. It was intended for a railroad. And if you look into that law and how that was done, the land that wasn't necessary for a railroad was to go back to public ownership. And yet here it is, still owned by them. And I understand why they feel like they need it. Part of it's because they've always said, well, if we're going to do any construction, like the electrification project, we need a staging area. Okay, fine. But again, just coming back to this idea of, you know, a lease agreement for a parking lot with, with a public agency like that, it seems to me it would be much better to go to them and say, you know, we've got a parking problem, we'd like to solve it and temporarily we would like to do, use this gravel parking lot, but looking for something with either no payment at all or something far less than what we're paying and not something that, that is for five years. So for those reasons, I would, I'm not in favor of this. What Mr. Eaton proposes, I think, is an interesting idea because it would at least generate some business and get some energy back on that side of the, the El Camino. So I would be in favor of what he's recommending, which would be a 90-day stay on, on any action at all on this item.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Gentlemen, do you want to weigh in here?
Go ahead. All right, I'm, I'm kind of conflicted on this. I've known Don for a long time. You know, we worked together on a lot of things. I lived in this town when there were three miniature golf courses, actually two, but we had four in the area. So I, I completely understand the, the desire to, to put one in. But one of the things that we have to consider and have had to consider and have made some very difficult choices on the council is that we have to respond to what the community wants. And we've heard over and over again that, you know, yes, traffic is a problem. We heard that issue tonight. We've also heard on every survey we've ever done that parking is a problem. And we have a lot of people that live in the south part of town that lost their parking because of customers that go to local restaurants. A lot of those things were put in motion by, you know, prior planning commission decisions, council decisions years ago, but the problem doesn't go away. The only thing that really does concern me, I shouldn't say the only thing, but what does concern me is the whole five-year lease. But, so I was a little bit gratified to hear that it's, it's renewable and it can be broken and, or it can be modified if it doesn't work out because, you know, the one thing we don't know is if this thing is actually going to work. And it could be that it doesn't work and people aren't, and employees aren't inclined to park over there. They find other places, maybe they take public transportation and they just don't want to cross El Camino. The other thing that comes to mind, having been involved on the, as part of the Caltrain Electrification Task Force, is that high-speed rail, while a ways off, may want to run passing tracks through this town. And when I grilled them about, you know, how are you going to do that, you know, they, they said that they would, they'd modify the existing berm. And if you do that, there is a lot of work to be done. It, it would become a staging area for high-speed rail. It would also become a staging rail for electrification. So it's, I, my feeling is that I'd really like to see this happen, at least for Don's sake. There are a lot of people that came to a meeting, and this is an ongoing problem for, for residents. And I just, I don't see how we can ignore that fact at this time, so I'm not going to be voting for it. If it turns out to be a miserable failure, nobody uses it, then we can revisit the whole issue then.
Okay. Thanks, Ron. Mark, did you want to offer any thoughts or?
No, I was going to say, I've offered most of my thoughts already. If anything else occurs to me, please feel free.
I mean, my, my point of view on this is that there's essentially two different proposals for this same piece of land. One is to put a parking lot, the other is to put a miniature golf course. Both have public benefits. You know, adding a miniature golf course where families can go would be great. I would take my kids there. Adding a parking lot so that employees can park there and alleviates traffic in south end of Laurel has a public benefit, particularly for the residents who live very close. I think what I'm hearing Don say is that he would like a little bit more time to prove out the feasibility of his proposal. I think that's appropriate under the circumstances. If after that period of time, he says it's not feasible, we can, you know, move forward with a parking lot. There are another, there are other options for parking lots in the area. And I think that we should be proceeding to solve the immediate problem, which is people concerned about customers and employees parking in front of their homes by moving forward with the residential parking permit program, which we are, which we are doing. And so from my perspective, if Don is saying he wants, you know, maximum 120 days to prove out the feasibility of, of building a miniature golf course, I think that's a reasonable thing to do and come back in 120 days and see where we are and reevaluate it at that time. And it, it does not mean that it's an either-or decision today. It's a, let's get some more information and then make a decision then. So that's where I would come down on it, but I'm happy to let others speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question sparked by, by your comments, since you and I are both on the Parking Subcommittee and maybe I, I've forgotten something. You referred to other options for park, parking lots or areas down there?
We, we have been presented with other possibilities that would include acquiring land, you know, and I, and I don't know how much of this has been done in closed session or open session, but there have been other ideas that have been sketched out.
Oh, yeah, no, I recall, that was in the, in the Subcommittee meeting we had, those are public meetings. But the, now I understand what you're saying. I mean, personally, for me, those are all much longer-term and more problematic and far more expensive than this, which is, which, you know, doesn't mean they couldn't happen, but, but they're, they're not equivalent things. The other question I had was for, for staff, which is, what are the risks or consequences, I guess, of the kind of delay that Mayor Johnson was suggesting?
Well, I mean, I don't have a complete crystal ball, but I did have an opportunity to talk with Brian Fitzpatrick, who's in charge of the land leases over at SAM Trans this afternoon. And I asked him that question essentially. And he, you know, he gave me every assurance that he could that, you know, if we want, if the council wanted to provide a few more months to Don to talk to them and continue to explore the concept of the miniature golf course there and leasing the land, that it would still be available for us if we wanted it 120 days from now. But the caveat there is, of course, somebody could come along today or tomorrow, and there have been other, according to SAM Trans, other interested parties in this particular property, and somebody could come in and make an offer that's more attractive than either of ours to them and they could, there's, you know, their hands aren't tied in any way, shape or form, so there's no guarantees. But it, it sounds like this wouldn't be fatal to the city's efforts to lease that land if in a few months, we were back here having this conversation again.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I had one other question, just, I'd just like to get my, my colleague's sense of looked at. I understand where, where Don's coming from. I mean, I think the first time you brought this up with me was a year or so ago when we had lunch, one of the times when we had lunch. But looked at from another perspective, essentially what's happening is there was a proposal brought forward by staff to try and address an issue affecting the community. And somebody else has said, well, wait a minute, there may be another use for the land here. I'd like time to evaluate that. Does that mean that, that let's say, Don's approach, Don's idea for the miniature golf course, for whatever reason, doesn't go forward? If somebody else comes forward and somebody else comes forward, are we going to say, okay, wait, wait a minute, we need to wait till all other possible options are considered before we, before we make a decision on this, this proposal? That's something I'm kind of wrestling with a little bit. That doesn't seem like a good practice for making public decisions. So just be interested in people's thoughts on that.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know. I don't think people have been beating down SAM Trans doors to rent that piece of property, as far as I know. It's, it's a sort of undistinguished tract of land right now, so I'm not too worried about that.
Matt, did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I would, we need three people to change this or just two or what? Because I'll jump on with what you're talking about, just to give it some time and give it the opportunity for something other than parking, because I understand the, you know, the need for parking down that end of town. But again, I think the synergy between one side of the street and the other, when it comes to businesses, is, has been wanting for the last, what, Don, when did the, we do the Great Sep? That was 30 years ago, right? And? Is it? Yeah. Whatever that time period's been, it's been a long time that businesses have been not on that one side of the street. And I, again, I just think it, it's hurtful to everyone who's trying to do business on the west side, so.
Let me ask our parliamentarian here, what do we need to continue an item?
Well, the issue before you is just whether or not to approve the lease. So if you, you have the choice of continuing it to a date certain, to setting it on a future agenda out, or just tabling it for now and then having, instructing staff to bring it back at a certain point.
And, and any of those things need a simple majority?
The, well, if, if, if the approval does not pass, it's, it's denied. If it, if, if you just want to continue it, you need three votes to do that.
So I'm, so I'm there with you to continue it. You've got two.
Two, two, 120 days. Okay, so that's, that's what's on the table. Do we have a third vote to join us?
Well, to use one of your expressions, I'm reasonably persuaded. Then that calamity isn't going to pursue, isn't going to ensue if we don't, if we don't do this tonight, so.
Okay. All right. Well, there's our third vote. So, Mr. Eaton, we will see you in four months and we will move on to item.
So, Mr. Eaton, we will see you in four months, and we will move on to item 9A, Reports to Council. Report to Council on the Midyear Evaluation of the East San Carlos Pilot Residential Parking Permit Program. Mr. Seve.
Good evening once again, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. This is a midyear report on the Greater East San Carlos Residential Permit Parking Program, and I'd like to introduce Senior Management Analyst Kristen Elderson, and she will provide you with an overview of this evaluation and will be available for questions. Kristen?
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council. So I'm here tonight to report on our midyear evaluation of the Pilot Residential Parking Permit Program. All right, so the background of how we developed the Residential Parking Permit Program is the development of it was included in the conditions of approval for the Transit Village Project. In December 2014, a petition was received from three blocks, Cherry, McHugh, and Montgomery, that asked for the program to be created. And between March and July of 2015, staff worked closely with the neighborhood to develop the Pilot Residential Parking Program. In August 2015, the program was adopted by the City Council, and the implementation began shortly thereafter. A soft enforcement period of the program ran from October through December of 2015, where warnings were given to educate people about the program, and then full enforcement started in January of 2016. The Pilot Program was designed as a one-year pilot program with an evaluation to take place after the first six months, and that's what brings us here today. The Pilot Program was developed, and it includes two zones, a business zone and a residential zone. So you see the business zone on the map in blue and the residential zone in yellow. Each of the blocks had to petition to be included in the Pilot Program, and we received 100% participation. So the entire Pilot Program area is currently participating. In the residential zone, enforcement is Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and there's a two-hour parking limit without permits. Vehicles displaying a permit are exempt from these restrictions, and permits are free to residents. Residents are allowed up to four permits for vehicles registered to an address, and two permanent guest permits are available. In addition, residents also have the option to apply for up to six special event guest permits as needed. In the business zone, enforcement is Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and permits are available for business and employees in the business zone only. Fees and rules are the same as the Downtown Business Parking Permit Program. So in creating this program, there were three main goals or areas of concern that we were looking for the program to address: commuter parking, Giants Game Day parking, and employees from surrounding businesses parking in the neighborhood. So in evaluating the program, we were specifically looking to see if these goals had been addressed by the program, and we were also evaluating if residents felt a general sense that the parking issues had improved, that the petition and application process was easy, that enforcement was sufficient. We were evaluating communication between the city and residents, as well as businesses. And then lastly, we were also evaluating if there was anything unexpected that came So the actual evaluation process, there was some quantitative collection of data and then also some qualitative and anecdotal data collection that was done. The quantitative portion, we looked at statistics from the enforcement and then also from the permit process. And the qualitative feedback was informal feedback that was gathered over the implementation process as we received phone calls and emails with questions. We held a community meeting in May for residents to provide us feedback on what was working with the program and opportunities for improvement. And lastly, we had a Shape San Carlos topic that was open for residents to submit additional feedback if they had things that maybe weren't covered in the community meeting, or if they were unable to attend the meeting. So getting into some of our evaluation data, we saw a very high percentage of participation in the Residential Permit Program. We had 93% of residences apply for a permit. The average number of permits per residential address was two, and no special event permits were applied for. The Pilot Program allows for residents to receive a maximum of four permits per household with two guest permits. So the average number of permits being two and no special event permits being applied for indicates that the number, the maximum number of permits that we had put into the program was about right. On the business side, we had about 32% of businesses apply for a permit, and there were about nine permits per business. On the enforcement side, between January and May of this year, there were a total of 259 citations that were given. Of those 259 citations, 181 of them were directly related to the program. And so that means that they were citations specifically for exceeding the time limit or not displaying a permit. And then, as I mentioned, one of the goals of the program was to try and target the Giants Game Day parking. And so in April, with the first Giants home game, we put out two electronic signs, one along Old County Road and one along East San Carlos, and also had additional enforcement going on in the neighborhood. And there were 17 citations that were issued that day. All right, and then as we move into some of the qualitative and anecdotal data that we collected, I have it separated into two categories, what worked well, and then areas for improvement. So one of the very basic questions that we were asking residents is, do you get a general sense that parking in your neighborhood has improved? And at the community meeting and from talking with residents and the Shape San Carlos topic, the neighborhood does feel that parking on their street is easier and that they're able to find spots near their home more frequently. Another thing that we discovered was that in creating the program, we had gone back and forth about how to manage the petition process, if we should do it on a block-by-block basis or as a whole area. And we found out that doing it on a block-by-block basis worked really well, because each block developed an unofficial champion that helped get signatures and share information and then submit the paperwork. And then lastly, feedback from residents and businesses indicated that the online permit process was straightforward and easy to use, and we experienced a minimum number of people who came into the counter to get permits or called with issues or questions about the online permit process. And then areas for improvement. One of the most frequent complaints that we heard from residents and businesses was enforcement and the frequency of enforcement occurring. When this program was started, a full-time CSO was hired with the intention that half of their time would be spent in the neighborhood enforcing this program. And so we've been working with the Sheriff's Department to ensure that enforcement is occurring regularly. And since the community meeting in May, I've heard anecdotally from a couple residents that the enforcement in the neighborhood has improved. So that will be an ongoing one for us as we move into the next six months of the Pilot Program to keep an eye on. And then another area for improvement was signage. We installed signage with the intent of putting the least amount of signs in as possible and then adding more as needed for public information and enforcement. And so we recently added a couple more signs along Bayport Avenue to help with those efforts. And then lastly, parking north of Holly Street. We've received some complaints from residents who live specifically on Springfield Drive, which is the first block in the neighborhood north of Holly, that they've seen an increase of parking on their street. At the final evaluation of this program in late fall, we'll be including recommendations on expanding the program to other areas of the East San Carlos neighborhood. And as I mentioned specifically with enforcement, each of these areas for improvement, I think, are going to be ongoing, and we'll continue to monitor them or monitor them as we move into the next couple months of the program, and then even if it's made permanent after And then with that, the next steps of the Pilot Program, we will come back to the City Council in late fall of 2016 with a final evaluation and recommendations on either making the program permanent, making modifications to it, or terminating it. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
All right. Thanks very much, Kristen. Questions for Kristen? Ron?
Kristen, I don't know if you can answer it, our chief office is here. I'm just curious, what's the average cost of a ticket?
So the tickets range from about $35 to $50, depending on what the citation is.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Ron. Matt?
Yeah, my only question is, does modification of the program that you might be recommending include expanding it to the north side?
Um, possibly.
Okay.
Oh, then I have another question.
I was going to say, the north side is included in the conditions of approval from the Transit Village, so that would be considered. And we're also looking to do a parking study in that neighborhood to get an idea of the actual impact that's happening on those streets. We have some data.
That would include Old County Road as well? When you're looking at the data and studying that issue?
Between Holly and Northwood Drive.
Good. Okay.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Mark?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually was just, was curious, as a reminder, about when those possible improvements will be brought forward, or changes will be brought forward.
We're thinking the second meeting in October.
Okay.
So then we'll get time to do any renewal stuff that we'll need.
Okay. Ron, you had another question?
Yeah, I did. Have you had interest from the north side of Holly for, to expand the program?
We've heard from a handful of residents. I think about four or five residents have just expressed that they've noticed more parking on their street, and they seem to be a majority of residents that live on Springfield Drive, which is that first street right north of Holly.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll just say, you know, we had a chance to look at this in the Subcommittee. I really appreciate the staff's work on it. You know, this was an ongoing concern from residents who lived in that neighborhood, and this seems to have satisfied the vast majority of their concern. So I really appreciate all the hard work, and hopefully it's a template that can be used elsewhere where appropriate. Okay. We will move on to item 9B, a Report to the Council on Wheeler Plaza Construction and Parking. Mr. Seve.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. So, an update on the Wheeler parking construction issue. And what I'd like to start with really quickly is, you know, going into this, we had some guiding principles for how we'd like this to go, and we know that there's going to be a disruption as a result of the Wheeler Plaza project being constructed. And what we'd like to do is come up with a plan, and I think we have, with a, with parking that's convenient for the businesses and employees and the community. We'd like to limit disruption as much, as much as we possibly can, and we, I think communication is, is going to be critical, and it already has been, and we're working very closely with the businesses in the area and the broader community. And so the last time that we talked to the City Council, we had talked about July, August for construction to start, and things have changed, and it wouldn't be the first time that I've seen a construction schedule change over the years. But one of the things that's, a number of things have, have come up. In terms of the updated timeline, you see there on the screen, the property transfer is going well. The city has completed all the documentation that we need to make the transfer, and it's in escrow. There are some things the developer and Silverstone need to do, but that's up to them. So we're, the city's part is done there. In terms of some of the things that are pushing the schedule out, part of it is the undergrounding of the utilities, the PG&E refers to it, and sometimes Public Works, as Rule 20 work, and that would be undergrounding all the wires and making sure that all the businesses have power during construction. As you know, there's a lot of businesses that back up to Wheeler Plaza. And so what we're looking at today is, in late August, early September, you would begin to see the demolition of all the businesses along San Carlos Avenue and the Foodville Building. And the paving of the temporary parking lot for Foodville would begin mid-October. And what we're thinking now, since we don't believe that the valet program will need to begin until January, is that maybe we can use that parking for, for public parking in the interim. So once that is paved and any Rule 20 work is out of the way, we can just allow the public to park there for a little while before the valet assist program starts. PG&E is working very closely with the developer on undergrounding of the utility, so PG&E is heavily involved in how that works. The developer had to order some transformers, and that takes a long time to build those machines. And so all that has pushed the Construction Start Act out to January, February. The city is, city staff is working with PG&E to try and move that forward. So we're, we are facilitating discussions between the developer and PG&E to see if we can move this a little bit forward in the process. In terms of interim parking and the intent of the parking program, the idea is to pave the Foodville lot, and there would be approximately 50 spaces there. We'd make it three-hour parking. Right now, Wheeler Plaza is at two-hour parking, so give a little extra time for folks for the inconvenience. The Samtrans parking garage has been leased, so all the, all the paperwork is signed for the lease of both the parking garage and the railroad tracks south of Arroyo. So the idea would be that if the Foodville parking lot fills up, people would be redirected over to the Samtrans building. Employees would be able to park there all day. We have a permit parking program that we will sell those permits to those folks. They would be a hangtag-like program, and they could park there all day. And Samtrans has been very cooperative. They have already started to give out hangtags to their own employees so that they don't get in the way of law enforcement, and there's already parking enforcement started in the garage to start to clear out the people who shouldn't be parking there right now to make it ready for the city. So all that's moving forward. The lot along the train track south of Arroyo would be used for construction parking and also some additional downtown parking. And so this diagram you see on your screen there shows, this light blue area is the Wheeler Plaza construction area, and that's the, this darker purple area is the Foodville parking lot. So that would be our primary downtown location. People would be redirected over to the Samtrans building, and there should be a good number of spaces over there for employees and customers. It's about a three-minute walk into the first part of the historic core, so it's pretty convenient for folks. The Arroyo parking lot for construction and also employees, it's a little farther if you want to get into the downtown core, but if you work in this area of Laurel or any of the businesses in this area, it's still pretty close in terms of walking distance. Valet assist, so when we first started talking about this program, we talked about a valet program, and that, you know, everybody kind of knows what that is, I believe. But what we heard in meetings with businesses and talking to M-Park, who is the parking contractor, is that people like to maintain control of their cars. The car is like a second home or an office, and you have all your stuff in your car. And so relinquishing control of your car is something that people just would prefer not to do. So the valet assist program allows people to be directed into a spot. If you get there and you get a spot, you don't have to give your keys to the valet person. However, if you get there a little later and those spots are taken up and the valet does need to park it behind those spots, then you would have to leave your keys so he can move those cars around. So that's, that's how the valet assist program works. In terms of directional signage, we will, are looking at all the signage in the area, and it will be installed to direct drivers to both locations. And if, if one lot is filled up, the signage could be changed to direct people into the Samtrans parking garage, and so we'll be utilizing both permanent and temporary signage for this. We've done a fair amount of outreach to date. We've had a lot of meetings. We've met with various groups in the community, Hometown Days booth, and we will continue that outreach, and we have some upcoming things that we And we will continue that outreach, and we have some upcoming things that we intend to do. I know from just talking to some of the business owners and the employees in the downtown, to places that I go and shop, I know that, that they are aware of this. Perhaps not everybody, but a lot of the employees are aware of what's happening, and they post the letters that we send them on the refrigerator in the, in the back and everything so that they can see what's going on. We will be sending another letter to the businesses in downtown following this meeting, letting folks know what's happening. And then, of course, we have the Spotlight. We have Farmer's Market booth, social media and such. Some of the key people in terms of communication, Lisa Costa-Sanders is one of our principal planners. She's available. We've hired Dolores Montenegro to help us navigate the construction problems and troubleshoot some of the issues in the community, not just with Wheeler Plaza, but with all construction activity. And that has been very, very effective, and she's been great. Laura Tuchel, Public Relations for the developer, has a lot of connections in the business community, and also is available if people need to talk to someone. And so, that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions of the mayor or council.
Thank you, Al. Questions for Al? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Al. Good update, as always. My questions, at least initially, revolve around the general topic of communication, which you were touching on, on the end. And I don't mean to point fingers at the individual I'm going to describe here, but I will never forget, as long as I serve on the council, about, at the very end of when we were doing the East Side Connect project, I think we all got an email from a business owner over there who was surprised about the restriping of some of the parking spaces on the street. And he, he had obviously no idea of anything that had been happening, up to that point. The point being that you can do outreach and outreach and outreach, and people aren't just, just aren't gonna know. So, I'm glad to see that, that staff and the developer are taking that seriously. Has there been consideration given to using the Wheeler lot, starting as soon as we could before the, it gets closed down, to put signs up in the lot saying, you know, this lot's gonna be closed in two months, or whatever, things like that? I mean, that's a place where people are going, and they would be looking to park, and they might catch their attention.
You know, I think that's a good idea. It's not something that we, we haven't discussed that specifically, so that's a good idea. And I think that we could do that.
Okay. If I may, I'll toss another idea your way, which, which is, I think is a little less important than the alerting people about a big change is coming, and where they should go for information on how, how to address it, so they can learn all the things that the developer and staff are doing to try and address the issues. As the project is underway and the construction is happening, I personally really hope that we can get the developer to put up some signs in various places that talk about the benefits the community is gonna get. I mean, not only the Class A retail space, but the fact that we're getting, what is it, 65 new spaces, or 60 parking, new parking spaces? Something so the people who, when they're dealing with the inevitable frustrations and complications that are caused by the construction, they will at least see that there's something that, there's not only a light at the end of the tunnel, but there's benefit coming back to them.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Matt?
The question I have, I have a question and some comments. You're talking about directing people to go park in different places. And I'm wondering, at how many locations are you, are you going to have a person who's doing, giving direction?
In terms of the, the human element, so you'll have the valet assist at Foodville, and you'll have the valet assist personnel over at the Samtrans building. So, there would be people at, at those two locations. There aren't any, we didn't plan on having folks like in the street directing traffic or anything like that. But, you know, we're open to some creative ideas during the first part of this. I think part of it is education. You know, once people kind of know what's going on, and they figure it out, and we can help people along with that, we can come up with some other creative ideas like that.
Is, those people are being paid for by the developer or the city, or?
The developer.
The developer. Because the other thing that I think about is, you know, to have proper communication. I think of like, if you, not to advertise for them necessarily, but, you know, if you ever go visit Palo Alto Medical Foundation, both in Palo Alto and the one here in San Carlos, they have assistance all throughout the garage, and that helps keep traffic and, you know, moving along and so forth, especially at the busier times, because you don't have to so much look for a place to park as you get helped to find where that is. And by comparison, I can tell you, when I was getting my cancer treatment, I'd go down to Stanford, and you go into their parking garage, and you just keep going round and round and round until you find somebody who's pulling out or whatever, if you're there at 2:00 in the afternoon and it's really busy. And I always liked that about Palo Alto Medical, that, you know, they have these people that direct you, hey, there's a space over here. And so, with that in mind, I think of our town, our downtown, and I think of, you know, with other plazas, we've got South Plaza, we've got Williams Plaza. And then, you know, there's gonna be parking spaces along San Carlos Avenue that can be used. A lot of times, there's, you know, it's not too far to walk, really, but, you know, in, in front of CVS on San Carlos Avenue, many times, there's, you know, being that I live in that area, and I see that, you see empty spaces along there all the time. And so, having some people around in these other areas with, you know, little radio-controlled things and saying, hey, there's a space over here, and so you send somebody over there. I think that human element, if there's anything in the developer's budget for something like that, for a few more people to be giving notice to somebody who's at the site where Foodville is, it might be given some consideration, I think. So, and I'll forego my question. I think that's good enough.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. Ron?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Nice presentation, Al. Just a couple things. I think I know the answer to this, but I want to confirm it. You said you're gonna demolish the Foodville building and put in the parking. And will that coexist with Wheeler Plaza parking as it exists right now, until you're ready to fence it off?
Yes.
So, basically add another 50 or so spaces?
Yes. That's what we're thinking, is there may be a window there where we can just add to Wheeler Plaza parking.
Okay. And then, the other thing is, I brought this up with the developer when I met with him, and I encouraged him to do it, and maybe he's already thinking about it, and maybe I haven't seen it because the project's, you know, just been delayed for various reasons. But I suggested that maybe they could put a one-pager in the window of every business that would accept it, from San Carlos Avenue to Arroyo, you know, saying, you know, here's what's going on, here's the timetable, and here are the alternative places for you to park. Is that something that you've discussed with him, or that he's mentioned to you, that he's heard from me, or anybody else?
You know, we are going to send, the city, the city staff is going to send a letter to all the businesses and the property owners in the downtown area. So, that's something that we can maybe ask the businesses to do as part of this letter, is, is give them a map, or give them some kind of a, a quick, you know, brochure-type of paper that they could post in the window. And we can also discuss that with the developer as well. So, I will be meeting with the developer and, and their staff this Wednesday, so we can talk about that.
Yeah, that'd be great. I don't know what the timetable is, but maybe by October, so that people have plenty of warning that this is all happening.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Ron. Just a couple clarifications. So, the valet assist is gonna be happening at the Foodville lot. Is it also gonna be happening in the Samtrans garage?
Yes.
And will that be happening for both employees and residents and customers?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have, a lease has been signed for the Samtrans garage today, is that right? Is there?
It was signed a while back.
It was signed, but I mean, it is open today, so if I wanted to park in the Samtrans garage tomorrow, I could do so, or not until the valet goes into place?
Not until the valet goes into place. So, that would be January, February timeframe.
I got it. So, that's really, construction has to start, which then starts the valet, which then, even though we have a lease for the space?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I think, my only comment is, I, I see why that makes sense. That being said, because there is a long lead-up, if there's opportunities to start it earlier to climatize people, where you have, you're opening up the Samtrans garage while Wheeler is still open, and you're starting to move employees over and starting to get people used to it, may be beneficial. It may not be feasible. The other thing that I noticed from the staff report, which was, was new information, is that the, the Samtrans garage is leased actually to the developer, not to the city. Is that right?
Yes.
Does that create any complications or concerns in our ability to manage the parking program?
No, I don't believe so. I think we're, it's a collaborative effort. And so, the developer has to perform, we have to perform, and we're all in this together. So, I think that...
Well said.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, I guess the last question I have, and I know this isn't the last time we're gonna talk about it, is, I certainly hope that we can have, you know, a series of reports to council as we go, so that we can get a status update along the way. And so, is that, is that the plan of staff to kind of?
Absolutely. We'll, we'll come, you know, every, before any milestones, maybe every month or two, we'll come to you. We don't, you know, wanna overdo it, but we wanna keep you informed, we wanna keep the community informed. So, yes, we intend to do that. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Al. Mark, you had another question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And actually, another thought sparked based on your conversation with Al. Al, at one point when I was talking with John, the developer, earlier on, he had talked about the possibility of there being, I'm remembering it as almost like a distributed valet system, in other words, where you drop your car off at one of two places. But if you were at a restaurant down the street, there was some app that you could use on your phone that would say, hey, I'm down at Spazo's, and that they were gonna bring the car down there. Do you know if that's part of the plan, or maybe that fell to the wayside for whatever reason?
I don't know, but I can find out this week.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not a deal breaker if we're not doing it for any reason, but if we are doing that, I definitely think we should make sure people know about it, because it's kind of a nice, that'd be a nice thing to have. I wanted to follow up on, on the mayor's comment about asking for updates on this project on a periodic basis, which I think is a great idea, and I certainly support it. Personally, given this project, Landmark Hotel, the Transit Village, and various other big things that, that may be happening, I wouldn't mind if we had kind of on a regular basis reports on the impact of just major developments in San Carlos. I mean, the Meridian Project, too, for that matter. Just to keep us abreast of what's going on and provide a forum to make sure that if there are issues that are coming up, or resources that are needed, that we, we allocate them and get them addressed.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Matt?
Just a thought, after hearing what Mr. Olbert just said, I agree completely about giving updates frequently with all this going on. But it occurs to me, when he mentioned about going to restaurants, it seems to me that's a little bit different kind of customer in the downtown than, you know, someone that comes in to go sit in a restaurant for an hour and a half, or whatever, they are gonna be there. It's a little different than somebody who's coming in and they're gonna go shopping, they're not exactly sure where they're gonna end up, or what they're gonna be doing. So, you know, a valet system for a restaurant, it just, I don't know, it seems to me that that would be something that we could give some thought to. It could alleviate some of the parking problems and be seen as almost like a feature, a benefit of, of coming downtown to have dinners, that you're, you know, somebody takes your car, and they know how long you're gonna be there for dinner, and then they bring it to the restaurant, and off you go. So, you might, you know, the developer and your staff might give some thought to that. It could be a quote-unquote, you know, a sexy idea for people going to have dinner.
All right. Thanks, Matt. I had one last question, which is the, the building on the first block of Laurel, where there's eight current vacant storefronts that's planned to be developed, redeveloped. I know that the initial proposal was that the construction was gonna occur simultaneous with Wheeler construction. I can say, when I was at the Farmer's Market, week and a half ago, I got a lot of questions about, hey, what's going on? You know, why these things have been vacant, you know, for a long time. What's the latest with that? And what's staff's perspective about whether, you know, that should move forward to be timed with Wheeler Plaza construction versus at the discretion of the developer when he wants to move forward?
Well, the developer has received discretionary approval, meaning approval, for the design review of that project from the planning commission. So, the developer's free to apply for building permits now. So, it's really the balls in the developer's court in terms of when and how they go through, how quickly they go through the process. We don't have those plans yet. We understand that the developer may, even though he's gotten approval, may be considering other options and redesigning the building in some way, shape, or form. We don't have anything yet, but that's an option, that may be something we see. I think that it would be good to do it all at the same time, because it, it impacts the parking all at the same time. And, you know, there's no customers going to those businesses. So, it's actually a little bit less demand in that particular area for, for a period of time. I think we should just get it all done, and, and then we'll, you know, everybody will be open for business when the parking garage goes up.
Okay. I, I think it's a fair point of view. Are, are we actively encouraging the developer to, to wait until, you know, Wheeler is under construction, or do we?
Well, we haven't actively encouraged them, although we've talked about it. And we are coordinating things like the undergrounding of the utilities and all that. All that is being coordinated with this project, so there is some collaboration around that. But we haven't said, hey, you know, get on it.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Al.
Okay. We will now move on to item 10, a public hearing, consideration of a 10-month and 15-day extension of an urgency ordinance imposing interim development standards addressing lot size, lot width, and flag lots within the R6 Single Family Zoning District.
Mayor and city council, at your last meeting, you approved the interim ordinance, the urgency ordinance, for a period of 45 days. And state law allows the city council to consider an extension of that urgency ordinance within that 45-day period for a maximum of up to 10 and a half months. And so, that is what is before you this evening. And so, what's being proposed, and what was discussed at the last meeting, is that state law, there's a state subdivision law that says that cities have to process subdivision applications. You can't not do that. However, one of the things that cities can do is regulate subdivisions and how, and the standards surrounding subdivisions. And so, what the urgency ordinance did, and what the council did at the last meeting, is changed the subdivision ordinance specifications to say that you need to have at least a 10,000-square-foot lot and 65-foot lot width to do a subdivision, meaning you would need 20,000 square feet to divide it in half into two 10,000-square-foot lots. So, 5,000-square-foot lots, which were the issue that people in the community were talking about and discussing, is really, it's not feasible anymore under, with these new regulations. And so, that's what is what is in place. What is before you this evening is a request to extend this for 10 months and 15 days. And in doing so, you will allow staff and the community, the council, commission to have some time to consider this and, and look at some other options and other regulations and standards, and do some community outreach. So, next steps would be, we are, we've already started to gather information. We were meeting with members of the community on this. We intend to use the planning commission as a sounding board for staff and, and the community. But we're, city staff is open to meeting with community members, and we're open to meeting with groups of community members. So, I think this is more of an organic process where we're, we wanna let people know that we're available to talk about these things and to consider some ideas. So, with that, we believe that we would be coming, starting the process coming forward, hopefully in winter or fall, and then going from there. And with that... And with that, any questions?
All right. Thank you, Al. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Al. My question, I think, is actually for Greg. Greg, is there, I know you and I talked before the meeting that, that the state law allows us to impose an urgency ordinance for up to a total of two years. So, there's an opportunity to have a further extension, if this one passes, to add another 12 months onto it. Is there a way tonight in making a motion to extend this urgency ordinance to basically cap it off and say that it's extended for X months, but at that point, it's gone? It cannot be extended again?
That's a very good question. I think the statutory scheme at the state level would, even if you, I think even if there was a condition to limit the extension, a future council or a council could change its mind and say, well, the statute allows us to go further. But that might be something that, you know, we would have to bring it back to you to extend it beyond the 10 months and 15 days. And we have recently had urgency ordinances come back for extension in a shorter period of time than 10 months, but it's just staff felt that the complexity of this issue meant that we probably would need the full time, at least of the initial review period.
I appreciate that. I had suspected that was what the answer was, but I haven't passed the bar yet, so... My next question, I think, is for Jeff, which is, and I know that, you know, things come up that it's hard to anticipate, but realistically, what's the minimum amount of time that's necessary to work this process in a fair and reasonable manner? And the reason I ask that, by the way, is my reaction when I saw this, 10 and a half months seems like a fairly long period of time for this topic, big as it is.
I would say, you know, when we laid out the calendar, what we were looking at was several things, because remembering, once, once this goes, it's got to go to the planning commission, you know, not just for study sessions, but whatever the actual recommendations ultimately will be, will need to go to the planning commission. So, that's going to, you know, take at minimum about a month to get that agendized and get through the planning commission to council. Once it gets to council, you know, it would have to have two readings, and then it wouldn't go into effect for 30 days. So, you're looking at almost three to four months, just in terms of process, if we were ready to present the planning commission with recommendations today. Put on top of that, you know, I'd say at least two months, you know, because you want to have some public outreach meetings, a couple of study sessions. The council may want to have a study session after the planning commission before they hear an actual recommendation. So, you know, I would say that it's very unlikely or reasonable that we could get this to you any sooner than maybe your second meeting in January.
Oh, okay. I guess I must have done the mental math wrong. It sounded like you were adding up to about six or seven months. But were you then making...
Right. And the January is moving quickly, like, starting to cut corners in the process that I just described. So, that's why we're asking for the full 10 months, because we'd like to have some wiggle room, when I think 10 months gives us wiggle room. I don't think we're going to need all 10 months, you know, but six months is kind of pushing it.
Okay. And I take it that if the process was completed in less than, let's say it was authorized for a 10-and-a-half-month extension, if the process looked like it was going to be completed in less than 10-and-a-half months, I mean, we would have the opportunity to bring it back?
That's correct. We're not, we're not waiting to get started here. We're, we've started. You know, we're already working on this, so it's in process. And, you know, if it, if it gets to the point where, you know, we're in November, and the council's adopting something, and it's going to take effect 30 days later, as soon as the council adopts, that automatically ends, and the new regulations go in, it automatically ends the urgency ordinance, it's overridden.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mark. Ron?
Thanks, Cameron. Well, just a comment before my question, and that is, however this process plays out, I want as much community input as possible, whether it's town hall meetings, study sessions, or whatever. Lots of public notice. People know, if they miss a meeting, they'll have another opportunity to come to one. If I know anything from my discussions with my friends on the Belmont City Council, they did lots of public outreach and had a series of meetings. And of course, there are always a few people that said that wasn't enough, but I just want to make sure that we have as much outreach as possible, so that everybody gets a chance to make their suggestions, and whatever criticisms they have, they can be heard, they can offer, you know, their ideas, and understand why, if they offer an idea, and it won't work, why it won't work. Because I, we all get that all the time in emails. The other, the other question I had, Al, this is a little bit specific, but I want to, my question is, we're looking at, you know, this, this whole building standard thing. Is included in that a look at the standards, say, for second dwelling units? Is that going to be part of this review? Or, and if not, can it be? Or is it something that we should reserve for another discussion at another time?
You know, it, it isn't part of this discussion. It's a completely different component of our zoning ordinance, and it also is regulated by state law, so it's a whole different animal.
All right.
I think that if we were going to do that, we would do it separately. It's going to be complicated enough, I think, for just the housing standards. So, we would, we could, and you know, I was thinking in listening to the city manager and the discussion about timing, one thing that we could consider is taking this in pieces, meaning if we were farther forward, I think, on the subdivision analysis than we are on the house standard analysis, which is much more, I think, complicated, quite frankly. And so, I'm thinking that if we finish with the subdivision stuff first, we could bring that forward at a faster rate than we could the other, if that was the desire of the council, or, you know, if, I know there's a sense of urgency, so that maybe that's something that we will think about.
Okay. And maybe what I'll do, I'll schedule some time with you privately, and we can talk about some ideas about the future with, with respect to second dwelling units.
Sure.
Okay. Thanks.
I just want to add real quick onto what Al said, because it is actually my intention. I know that the subdivision issue and the home size issue came out of the same conversation that the city council had, and we got that direction at the same time, but they really are two totally different actions. And so, you know, it's been, you know, the urgency ordinance that we're dealing with tonight has nothing to do with home sizes, it's just dealing with subdivisions. And so, our goal, while we're working on both together, is to bring them, bring them back individually whenever they're ready to go. So, you're going to be dealing with both issues at the same time, but not necessarily always at the same meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Matt?
I want to respond to that just real quick. I have a question, but I tend to disagree with that, not to be disagreeable, but if we were looking at the house size issue, and first, not that we necessarily have the time or, you know, can change tracks that way, but if we looked at the house size issue, and the house size was, say, reduced, I know one of the things we did, we went from 40% lot coverage, for instance, to 50% lot coverage. So, if those kinds of things were looked at, setbacks and so forth, it could be that the subdivision, subdivision issue is not as big of an, of an issue. If people feel like, well, at least, you know, I'm not, this guy over here is going to, he's got a 10,000-square-foot lot, and he's going to subdivide it into a 5,000-square-foot lot, which admittedly, I think Tom brought this up before at the last meeting, we get, or no, it was Mr. Rivella, actually, who I don't see here tonight, but that we've got tons of lots that are 5,000 square feet in San Carlos, and nobody complains, because they, it's what it is. But when a really big house goes on to a 5,000-square-foot lot, and makes your neighbor feel like, wow, that's huge, then you've got an issue on your hands. So, it could be if we looked at the house size first and said, you know, we're going to reduce this a little bit and make, make it less impactful, people wouldn't be as exercised about the lot split as perhaps they are. I don't know. But I just throw that out there as, you know, one reason why these two are really, in my mind, they're coupled together, they're linked. That said, I just wanted to throw that out there. I do have a question for, for Mr. Savae, and that is, you know, I'm looking for a reason to extend this, actually, because I understand people's concerns. I feel the same way. I mean, I feel, I live in a neighborhood where, you know, we do mixed use and so forth, and I've got stuff going on around me that, you know, I dread the day it's all put in place, because I won't be able to see the sun ever, unless I, you know, take a walk. But, like I said, we've got, you know, a lot of lots that are 5,000 square feet. I think what people are upset about is that they live in neighborhoods, they've gotten used to them, they maybe bought into the neighborhood or whatever, and, you know, they've, you know, like Carmelita, use that as an example, there's a lot of large lots there, and, you know, it feels semi-rural. Graceland's the same way. You drive down Graceland, and you feel like you're back in the woods someplace. It's beautiful. But that said, what I'm looking for is, okay, we have the hearings, we let people talk, what do we, what could come of it? Are we going to come up with a different zoning district and sort of spot zone places like Carmelita and Graceland, where we're going to say, okay, if you live on this street from here to here, you can only, your lot minimum is 10,000 square feet? Or are we going to make it 6,000 square feet, and thereby make it, you know, if it's at 6,000, then if you've got 10,000, sorry, you can't subdivide, because 6,000's a minimum? What, what do I have, do you think? And I know you're, I'm asking you to read the crystal ball, but give me some reason why I should vote for this extension, because I'm looking for something that could come out of it that will be reasonable and make people happy.
Well, I mean, the way that we see it, I guess, is, as your professional planning staff, is, you know, we've been directed to come up with some ideas and make a presentation to you based on our professional judgment, and so, we're, you know, we're ready to do that. I, like you say, I really can't read a crystal ball, but as a, as a practicing planner, you know, we've, and having worked for different cities and communities, I know that there's lots of different ways to do things. Some ways are good for some communities, and some are not. It depends on the size, the scale, the feel, how you see yourself as a community. Like, you mentioned semi-rural, you would have different standards for house size and how they fit into the terrain and things for a semi-rural community, and as opposed to a community where we have historic neighborhoods with sort of, you know, rectangular lots, and so, you can do, there's a lot of different ways to approach this, and that's why we are kind of saying, well, it's complicated, and we need some time to figure this out, because we don't want to just present you with a blanket of all this, you know, information. We want to make some good, solid recommendations based on what we understand about people's concerns. So, you know, you could drop a zone down somewhere if you wanted to, or there's different ways to use the zoning that you currently have, and have sliding scales for sizes of homes depending on lot size. That can work in any zone. So, there's lots of different approaches to this, and that's what we intend to bring forward, is kind of look at it and bring a package forward that we think makes sense for San Carlos.
So, if I can follow up, then what you just said, that last part, would, would imply some changes to our zoning on how we look at house size?
We would need to change, if we were going to, we would need to change the standards for the size. It could be design characteristics or features of the home, bulk and mass. You don't necessarily need to change like the numerical, like, this is in our sixth zone. This is this major, single-family zoning that we have. You wouldn't necessarily have to say that, hey, this neighborhood is zoned something different. You could, within that zone, you could create standards that, that are reflective of lot size and characteristics and things like that.
But that, but what you're saying goes beyond the, just the question of lot splitting, subdividing.
Yes.
And so, I'm confused, because are we looking at just the lot splitting issue? Are we looking...
I largely agree with what you're saying. What we're hearing from residents is that because there's a very strong economy, and because housing prices have doubled in the last five years, and because there's a lot of developer interest, you're seeing lots of different symptoms that are affecting the neighborhood. Sometimes it's splitting lots, sometimes it's building bigger houses, sometimes it's splitting a lot and building two big houses. So, they, from a zoning perspective, they are different issues. From a resident perspective, they can be the same issue, they cannot be the same issue, but they're both, it's all due to the same underlying macroeconomic impact, effect, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, I think it is our intention to, to look at, and both the lot coverage ratio and the subdivision rules were changed in 2011 in response to a significant decline in the housing market. And so, the question is to look at both of those things in roughly the same period of time. I'm with you that I think it would be better to look at them at the same time, if that works, because I think that from a resident's perspective, and processing the information and thinking about what are we doing to, what are we doing to change the look of our neighborhoods, that being able to see it all, the entire picture at the same time would be beneficial, so. But I don't know if that's feasible, but that would be my preference.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, like I said earlier, both processes are going to be going on at the same time. So, the goal here is to have all that information and all those conversations happening within the same timeframe that we're talking about here. Now, whether or not specific actions need to tie together or not, we'll have to wait and see. You know, because there are lots of different, you know, I mean, as you saw tonight with Meridian 25, right, there were three separate actions that had to take place just for that one project. So, potentially with these two combined issues, there are a number of legislative actions that the council might take. Our, one of our goals here, right, is to try to get out from under the urgency ordinance as soon as possible, because we don't like to operate our community in an area of uncertainty. We recognize that right now, given the, you know, the interest and the outcry from the community, that we want to have an urgency ordinance in place, which is why the council adopted at the last meeting, to give us time to examine at least that particular issue. The other issue, there is no urgency ordinance, but we want them, because we, you know, we do see a connection, we want them to go forward in the same time period. But right now, tonight's conversation, this item, is really about, you know, how do we, how do we get, how do we end the urgency ordinance, right? Because that's what ultimately you want to do here. And I'm confident that, based on my conversations with Al and the planning staff, that there are going to be a lot of tools that are available to the council to try to solve this problem, some of which just have to do with splits, and some may be the bigger sort of residential land use issues.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there anything, the city attorney, I saw you thinking away there.
Oh, yeah. I, I, city manager kind of mentioned some of the things that I was thinking, but the, yeah, that's the item that you have before you tonight, is whether to extend it, and it is set for a public hearing, so I just want to make sure that we go, we hear from the public, and then you can make your decision.
Good point. So, Mark, I see your light on any...
That was very fast, Mr. Mayor. I just hit the button as you were turning around. Jeff, one question related to the effort involved with this, and again, thinking about this in the context of, I think, everybody in the community, both those who want us, whatever they want to see in the way of changes made or not made, would like to have this resolved as quickly as possible. What's the relationship between that timetable and resourcing? Have you had a chance to think about whether, are there additional resources that would expedite this? Obviously, a number of the things you talked about, you can't expedite a process that involves community input by pouring money on it. But if there are other things that can, that are amenable to responding to additional investment, I'm... can, that are amenable to responding to additional investment, I'm certainly willing to consider spending the money on it.
I appreciate that. We've had that conversation and, you know, to be honest, right now, we think that really the constraints aren't financial or resource-based, that it's really just, you know, trying to be practical and realistic with a timeline and recognize that, you know, we don't, we don't want to push the community. This is, we're talking about people's private property. It's a very sensitive issue, one of the most sensitive issues we deal with in the city, and we want to make sure that there's lots of time to get people engaged and have those conversations and, you know, try to get this right the first time that it goes to the Planning Commission and the City Council. But if there are resource constraints, we'll be sure to come back to the City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other lights on, so this is a public hearing. I have a number of speaker cards. I appreciate everyone's patience. As a reminder, public comment is limited to two minutes, and I would ask that you please try to abide by that out of respect for those other speakers. Our first speaker tonight is Brett Cohen, followed by Betsy Byer. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. So it was two weeks ago tonight that we were here discussing this issue when it was initially passed in terms of the urgency ordinance, and it looks like we have a similar card with several folks speaking again tonight. I'll work, not to be redundant, but quickly go through one of the points that was brought up during the last meeting that I gave some time to reflect on and wanted to encourage the council to think about. So I support the continuance of the urgency ordinance that was enacted two weeks ago. You know, there's no perfect time for this type of review, but now certainly the right time based on what the community stated. With this undertaking, I'd also urge the council not to start down the path of carving out any sort of exemptions related to this urgency ordinance. It is temporary. Exemptions may result in the continuation of some of the issues that we've seen regarding the specific entitlement grants that could end up being in conflict with the outcome of the analysis. And so while applicants may have to wait just a little bit longer for a specific outcome, it's important that the city reach a thoughtful conclusion with the larger issue at hand. At the same time, consideration should be given to existing applicants. Nobody likes to wait, and it does seem reasonable to offer an alternative. The urgency ordinance addresses the process of opinion applications in Section 4, and during the last meeting, Mayor Johnson had offered the opinion that anybody who's applied, paid fees, and is impacted should have their fees refunded. This suggestion sounds fair for any existing applicants who would prefer to take an alternative course of action rather than wait for the outcome of this assessment. So regardless of the ultimate outcome of this review, it is encouraging to see the elected leadership is listening or responsive to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Betsy Byer, followed by Frank Byer. Good evening.
I'm a 10-year, over 10-year resident of San Carlos and also a business owner in San Carlos, and I just want to urge you to continue to extend this ordinance to give the time needed. I was, as I sat here all evening, I was looking at our city logo and I realized that that's sort of my house up there, my ranch, and that is my oak tree. I live on Cedar Street, and actually, that's what's proposed potentially next to me, although it's not industry, it's a flag lot with two homes, and it's just inappropriate. So I want to urge you to take the time to extend this so that the city planning can do their job, and we all know real estate is a risky business, so people that, even myself, who invest in real estate, and if there was an earthquake, God forbid, tomorrow, it would all tank, so developers know going into a project if, that things change and economy changes and laws and ordinances change, so it's part of the game of real estate. So I think we shouldn't give favors to people that maybe have invested and are hoping because people that maybe invested in a large lot thinking they'd split, they didn't invest in two lots, they invested in one lot, so they knew they had to go through a process to split, and if that split doesn't happen, that's part of the game and the risk, so thanks, that's all to me.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Frank Byer, followed by Tom Derridan. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Frank Byer. I live with Betsy Byer. We're on Cedar Street, and we've been here for 10 years. First of all, I want to thank you for approving the ordinance two weeks ago. I was not able to attend that meeting because I was ill, but thank you for approving that. So the one thing that I wanted to mention was a little bit of history of this, so we're actually directly involved in the history of this conversation. So in January of this year, we were given a proposal by a developer who had just bought the property next to us to split the lot into a flag lot. So we were very shocked at the time, and we shared our proposal with our neighbors. Within hours, there was 30 family members in the community that had signed a letter against the proposal. Everyone was swiftly against it, very urgent, and we brought the problem to the attention of the City Council in emails and in person and the Planning Commission. So all this work has already been started, so I just encourage you to let the process keep going. I've been very heartened by the process. I'm very actually happy about how the city is handling this. They're letting all the citizens speak. So I would just urge you to extend this ordinance so there's plenty of time for the Planning Commission to do their job and come up with a solution that's best for the community. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comments. Tom Derridan, followed by Charlie Brnitsky. Good evening.
Another fun-filled evening. To kind of revisit Matt's concern, you know, it's easier to, and it's fairer perhaps in the onset, to think that if you, what's good for everybody and not have spot zoning, but, you know, the original, the original construction of this city was spot zoning, whether it was by happenstance or by design, places like Dalton and Linton and Devonshire Canyon and Queen's Court and King's Court more recently, and most people talk about Carmelita or Noel Drive or Elizabeth, but, you know, there's some areas that most people don't even visit in this city that are very large lots, and, you know, we're all worried about bringing jobs to this city. We're developing something right now that will bring more jobs to this city, more affluence to this city. And when will, when will it be to the point where it is feasible to buy a house on Queen's Court and tear it down and subdivide it? I mean, right now, there are $4 million houses perhaps, but someday it may be feasible to do something like, or to buy a lot on Graceland or a lot on Dalton or a lot on Linton or some of that up in the hill country there. So I think you have to, you have to consider the idea that you're going to have to spot zone certain areas that complement certain neighborhoods. Once again, I'm biased because I live on Carmelita, but I think you have to think about the character of the neighborhood, the flavor of the neighborhood, and if you're talking about subdividing a lot in the White Oaks where every lot in the White Oaks is a 50-foot lot, some 40-foot lots, then it's not so terribly out of character. But when you're talking about subdividing a lot on Eaton or on Linton or on Carmelita or on, then it is completely out of character.
If I could have you finish your thought?
My thought being that it is a very complicated situation for you gentlemen to figure out, and I think you're going to need every bit of that moratorium to be able to figure this out to everybody's benefit, and I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Charlie Brnitsky, followed by Ron Granville. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Charlie Brnitsky, and I'm here to represent the developer. The developer is actually Rod Lacassia, who is a 35-year resident of San Carlos, and he's brought me in to sort of help through the process of navigating the political waters, seeing if there's ways to reach out to the community, to reach out to the council and the staff and find compromise, because he's kind of caught between your desire to change the nature of the prior zoning and what he's done so far. And so, we would urge you not to extend for the reasons that we believe that the factual basis for an urgency ordinance doesn't exist, but really, the real reason we're here is to start the process. And last week, I met with your city attorney, Mr. Rubens, and talked about, are there ways that we could find compromise? And one of the things that he suggested was to see whether we could agendize the effective date of the urgency ordinance by having you put it back on your agenda in your late August meeting. And so, that's one of the things I would ask you to consider, because I think there's time to, in the next month and a half or so, to discuss with staff, to discuss with council, to meet with the neighbors, to talk about, are there ways that Mr. Lacassia and his wife can compromise and the neighborhood can compromise? There's deed restrictions to speak to Councilman Gocat's position. There could be deed restrictions on the size of the homes that are built there. Would that satisfy the neighbors? What are other things that could do that? And if you can put that back on the agenda for August, maybe we can come with some better compromises and speak to it in a better way and see if there are ways that we can compromise and satisfy everyone's needs. So thank you for your attention, appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Granville, followed by Patricia Freidenbach. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to talk again this evening. Since people have been commenting on how long they've lived in San Carlos, without being specific, I'll say a little over 60 years. Reserve exactly how many years, over 60 years. I'm here tonight to encourage you to extend the ordinance in keeping with staff's, you know, request. It gives time for full consideration of a complex and serious issue, and it prevents irreparable damage to our neighborhoods and for the adjoining home values for those people that are impacted. I know time's always limited. You've been very polite, listening to a lot of us talk at the other meetings and tonight. There are a number of people, a number of citizens here, I know, that want to urge you to do the same thing, and perhaps rather than have all of them come up and talk, some of them might want to just stand now and indicate your support. I didn't know all of them, but I knew some of them. Thank you. So with that, I really just urge you to pass the recommendation of staff, allow the time, whatever time is necessary, to consider this and work out what's really in the best interest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Patricia Freidenbach, followed by Jennifer Munoz. Good evening.
Hi, I live on Pine Avenue in San Carlos off of Carmelita, and a few years ago, I split my lot and a beautiful house was built, and it fits into the neighborhood quite nicely. And I know there was a lot of resistance from the neighbors at first, but then they saw the house, how it fit on the street, and it looks quite nicely. That's, I was just talking about split lots, and that's it. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. The last speaker card that I have is Jennifer Munoz. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm going to cut down what I'm going to say because you've heard a lot of this already, and I don't want to be redundant, but I am a longtime resident of San Carlos, and I carry a sense of pride for owning my modest home here. Building larger homes and subdividing lots has potential to change the cherished small-town neighborhood feel. I'm concerned about the rapid increase in density and the change in community character, and I want to make sure that any future changes are managed in a thoughtful manner in order to preserve the longstanding fabric of our neighborhoods. I'm in favor of seeing the urgency ordinance extended to 10 months to allow for the adequate time to collect and assess all of the relevant facts. I understand that in the last meeting, which I wasn't here for, that the city attorney clarified the point that a property rights taking would only occur if a city retroactively applied the rules to someone who had completed the application process and been approved. In other words, the act of submission doesn't constitute a taking because nothing has been formally granted. As a result, I am strongly in favor of the urgency ordinance applying to a handful of applications that have been submitted but not yet approved. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other speaker cards. Is there anyone wishing to speak on public comment? Please come forward. You can hand that to me. Good evening. If you could just introduce yourself.
My name is Mindy Trimmer. I'm a 12-year resident of San Carlos, and I did send an email to the council members after the last meeting and thanking you for approving the urgency ordinance. I didn't plan to speak this evening since I sent the email, but I want to address Mr. Gocat's comments on if so many lots in the San Carlos White Oaks area are already 5,000 square feet, and why does it matter if you take some of the larger lots and split them? I live on Seer, and two houses down, there is a developer who bought the property at 1348 who wishes to subdivide. In the area already, there are very small lots, and I can hear my neighbors, you know, hairdryer in the morning, I can hear the water fountain in the backyard, I have two houses that back up against me, and these are all single-family homes, they're all single-floor, they're not two-story homes. And we live in an area where it's very beautiful, and they're all different kinds of houses, but the larger lots give us space. They give us space for our neighbors, a space where you can ride your bike with your kids and not be going up and down and up and down all of the driveways. Beautiful trees. Every time we lose one of these larger lots, what comes with it when they're subdivided? You lose all the heritage trees. What's the point of having heritage trees if they can just be removed when the lot's subdivided in order to build two more homes? The lots are just needed for space. We only have 2% in San Carlos dedicated to our parks and recs and open space in our whole city. So our neighborhoods are the last place where kids ride bikes, they walk, you see dog walkers, joggers. If you go in those neighborhoods, you see people out all the time. So those large lots really are very crucial to our neighborhoods and the feel of our neighborhoods. So I have next to three, I don't have a 10,000-square-foot lot, but I live next to three of them in a row. If we lose that first one, what happens when the neighbor next to them decides to subdivide? Or the neighbor next to them decides to subdivide? That's three houses to six. So that's kind of what we're talking about, even though there are these small lots already. We need to preserve some of the larger ones as well. I'm not against development, I'm not against growth, just smart growth. Let's just do what's good for the neighborhoods and give us some of the space to keep it. Because the housing is not going to, the housing crunch is going to be addressed by all the condos or transit village, everything going downtown. A couple houses here and there may not seem like a big deal to the council, but to the people who live in those neighborhoods, it really is. I give you your time. I please urge you to approve this extension.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close a public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocat?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. So, Mark, I see your light is on. Did you want to ask a question or you want to make a motion?
I was actually going to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, so if somebody has a question, they should obviously go first.
Are there any final questions for staff? If not, Mark, go right ahead.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1510, a 10-month, 15-days extension of urgency ordinance number 1506 pursuant to Government Code Section 65858A, amending Municipal Code Sections 18.04.030 and 18.41.020, imposing interim development standards addressing lot size, lot width, and flag lots within the RS6 Single Family Zoning District.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Matt, or, excuse me, Mark, go right ahead.
Yeah, I am, obviously made the motion and have every intention of voting for it, but I also want to make clear to everybody that this is an important issue, obviously, and there are concerns on all sides of this, so I want to make sure that this issue gets resolved in a expeditious fashion, a proper, but expeditious fashion. I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to provide input, but we don't want to leave this hanging fire, and so I just want to make it clear that if this comes back for a further extension, I will not vote for that. I'm going to vote for this one time because we want to have the discussion, and we can't have it in the next 30 days. The other comment I wanted to make, this is a complex issue, and I think it was Betsy Byer who made a comment that triggered something for me, and again, I offer this just to ask people to remember that there are multiple sides to this thing. You talked about how, I don't remember your exact words, but it was, there are risks in real estate development and that developers understand that, and they should accept that, and I agree with that. The point I want to make is, we actually all, as homeowners, accept risks also, and the risks, one of the risks we accept because we do not own the properties around us, we don't actually control what gets built there, and I can assure the folks And I can assure the folks in the audience that, as a council member, I have been contacted by people over the years that object to colors that their neighbors have painted their houses, to how they handle their garbage cans, and where they locate them, and they'd like to see all sorts of rules on that. So I just ask everybody to remember that we all bear risks, and that what the council is really involved in is balancing the risks faced by various parties. So I appreciate you making that comment, because it helped clarify that for me.
Thank you, Mark. Matt?
So my comments aren't going to try and convince anybody on the dais of anything, but I do want to address the people who are here, because I want folks to understand why I asked the questions I did to staff. I wasn't saying it's unimportant to have different neighborhoods with different character. What I was saying is, what I was asking is, I was trying to get a feel from the staff, what should I expect? I mean, to me, it seems kind of easy. You just say, okay, 6,000 square feet is a minimum lot size, and boom, you're done. You don't have to worry about lot splitting, because if a guy's got a 10,000-square-foot lot, which seems to be the predominant problem, then you've kind of solved it. If someone's got a 20,000-square-foot lot, I don't particularly know where those are. I guess there are some in town. Or a 12,000-square-foot lot, maybe you don't have as much of an issue. I really don't know. But I really understand what you're saying, that even with, you may live on a 5,000-square-foot lot, but if you've got three on your street that are 10,000 square feet, yeah, that's different. Once you've got, you double the home size on those three lots, it makes a difference in what your little neighborhood feels like. And I understand, believe me, you know, we've all walked all over San Carlos when we tried to get these seats here. At least, I know I did. And I was actually, you know, I was amazed, the first time I did that in 1999, in walking up Graceland and realizing, wow, I'm still in San Carlos. This feels like I'm on, you know, in Emerald Hills or something. And I was fascinated by that, that San Carlos has all these little neighborhoods and communities. So then the question comes from what we're looking at tonight. Do we try to preserve some of that, or do we let it go? Certainly, one of the things that saddens me, actually, because, you know, one of the reasons I ran for council back in '99 was because I saw all this growth coming our way. Wheeler Plaza was being talked about back then. The Transit Village was being talked about back then. And I was opposed to those things, and I'm still opposed to them, yet I've been on the council for, what, almost 16 years? And those things are happening right underneath my feet, you know? And it saddens me, actually, because one day, a lot of us are going to wake up, and we're going to be driving downtown, and we're going to say, oh my gosh, somebody mentioned, you know, small-town feel. What happened to it? It's gone. Right? It's going to be gone. And I mentioned in my neighborhood, I mean, I've got stuff going, I have no, I sit on this dais, I have no control of what's going on around me. And seriously, in a couple years, I won't be able to see the sunset in the afternoon. Right now, it comes all the way through my house, from the living room window into my master bedroom. It's beautiful. It's going to be gone. Next door to me is going to be a 50-foot building, almost on the property line, because it's mixed use. I don't want to see that happen, but hey, you know what? We all should have been paying attention. I had a conversation at the plantation with a lady about this, and she was barking at me about the building that's going on right behind the parking lot where the plantation sits now, new location. And there's this concrete structure that's being built, you know, really tall. And she's saying, what's going on? I said, where were you? And we were redoing the general plan in 2011, you know? Really, people, that's when we should have all been paying attention. So I guess what I'm saying here is, yeah, let's extend it, let's look at it, let's study it. But you know what, people? Little San Carlos is not going to be little San Carlos anymore. And maybe, I understand thinking about your own neighborhood. Maybe it's time we thought about the whole town. And the next time we have to do the general plan, let's show up. Let's show up and give our opinions and chime in, because that's where it really happens, is when we set the general plan. That's what, you know, gives people these property rights, you might say. And it's very hard to back away from those. That's actually, I know it's a different topic, but you know, when we were looking at Meridian, that's why I approved it. The guy wasn't asking for anything that wasn't in the general plan, except going over the height. That's it. Not floor area, not parking spaces, not any of that. He wouldn't ask you for any more density than the general plan allows. So he's got his rights, and that's what I was looking at. But, okay, let's go ahead and study this for an extended period of time, and we'll see what we come up with.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. So I have a different point of view, which I'll share briefly, and then we can move on to the vote. You know, there is a lot of change happening, and it's being driven by the economy. It's being driven by the fact that the Bay Area is a great place for tech and innovation. There's lots of tech investment happening all around the world. Lots of people are moving here to take advantage of those great jobs and to seek opportunity. And as a result, there's a lot of pressure for development. And our job collectively as a community, and maybe the burden bears a little bit more with the staff and with the city council, is to guide us towards development that has benefits for the city and to not go after development that has more costs than benefits. The reason that we do that is primarily because the tax revenue that comes from residents is a very small portion of the budget. It's not enough to cover even basic public safety services, that much of the revenue that comes from the city, that comes into the city is driven by economic opportunity. And we want to provide a great city with great quality of life without having to ask people to raise their taxes. And that's sort of fundamentally it. And so we look for development like the new hospital, like the new hotel, like Wheeler Plaza, that we think add a lot of benefit, bring in a lot of revenue, create other public benefits, either through public space, creating jobs in town, but that aren't disruptive to what's core. And you know, what's core about our town is, as the woman spoke earlier, small-town neighborhood feel, great schools, low crime, access to great jobs, and a really cute, you know, charming downtown. And what we've tried to do on the council is to continue to emphasize and invest in the things that are core, while at the same time allowing for some incremental development that fits into the fabric of our city and creates a lot of benefits so that we can continue to reinvest. This specific issue that's been brought up, to me, is a great example of that. People have said, hey, what's core to San Carlos about me is my neighborhood? I want it to look and feel a certain way. I feel like it's the economy and development is taking us out a step from where I think we ought to be, and we ought to take a look at it. And so I'm very happy that we're doing this. I think that when we made the change in 2011, at the time when the housing market was not doing very well, and the economy was not doing very well, it was short-sighted. And now, five years later, the economy's doing great, you know, the housing values are up. We're in a position where it doesn't make sense anymore. So I'm happy we're doing it. I don't think that this means that, you know, that San Carlos is being overrun with development. I think the goal for all of us is to try to capture the benefits from the economic activity, and there are benefits for our community while trying to forego the costs and reinvest in what's core. So in that spirit, I'm happy to support this tonight and hope that, like Mark said, that we can move quickly and with a lot of public involvement to come to a long-term set of rules that make sense for the vast majority of our community. Mark, you wanted to weigh in?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just had an additional thought I wanted to add, actually, two. I think it's also, I mentioned this last time, I think it's also important that we all need to remember, it's certainly something that I'm going to be, it's going to weigh heavily on my mind in terms of whatever decisions we ultimately end up making. This is an issue that is right at the boundary between private property, private interests, and community interests. And we do not, we have plenty of rules in town that restrict what you can do with your own property. The example I like to use a lot of people in recent email conversations is, you may own a piece of property, zone for residential occupation, but if you don't have a working bathroom on it, we won't let you live there. Doesn't matter that you own it, because it's too much of a public health and safety risk for you not to have a working bathroom on your home. But when you look at the list of things that we constrain, they actually are fairly limited because we try to preserve, to the extent we can, private property rights. Because those are fundamental to our society, and they have generated enormous benefits for all of us. That's part of the reason we can afford to live here. So that's something I, again, ask everybody to keep in mind and remember as we go forward here. And I, too, am glad that we're doing this. It's good to have these discussions periodically. I think if we approach this from the point of view of everybody keeping an open mind and being flexible and realizing we're trying to be a community and not just a collection of atomic individuals, we'll come up with something that probably will please everybody, but hopefully will give everybody something.
All right. Thanks, Mark. Ron?
I'm going to make the shortest comments yet. I just want to thank everybody for coming. Thank you for your emails. Apologize if I don't respond to all of them. We do get a lot. I look forward to the process.
Thanks, Ron. I don't see any more comments, so, Crystal, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocat?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. All right. Why don't we take a couple-minute recess and reconvene, let's say, at 9:45?
Item 11A, consideration of adopting a resolution agreeing to share in the cost of school crossing guards with the San Carlos School District and appropriating $19,764 from the general fund for this purpose. Mr. Walter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. And tonight, we have an item that comes before you as the school district has asked for some additional funding for the crossing guard program. As councils, where back in late October 2014, you approved the first funding that we had for sharing crossing guards at two locations. And then, in the summer of 2015, we added another location. So there's currently three that we support. And essentially, this is where we're paying 50% of the cost for the guards, the cost of the contract of the guards that the school district is administering. And again, this has been a program that's been very well-received, and the school district has now talked about expanding the program. There are four additional locations that they want to add, for a total of seven. And two of those are city-street intersections. So we have made our recommendation tonight so that the council would be approving funding to share in the cost of those two additional locations. There is another aspect of the funding arrangement, however, is that the school district's contract rate has increased from $16.75 per hour to $20.98 per hour. So that does increase the cost of the original three locations that were part of the program. So as it relates, the table that shows the total cost of the crossing guards at each location and what the city's share is, and based on the fact that we currently have allocated $18,090 for the program, we need to allocate an additional $19,674 to reach the city share of the five locations that we would be splitting the cost. And on a map, they're shown here, and essentially, they are in the area around Central Middle School, where we have one at Woodland and Arroyo, Cedar and Arroyo, and Britton and Cedar, and then across town, over at the location where the Tierra Linda Middle School is, and we'll have one at San Carlos Avenue and Club, and up at Wellington and Dartmouth at city-street intersections. And there's two locations that I've noted in green, which are the ones on the school campuses. That would be my presentation. Any questions the council may have? Be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jay. Questions for Jay? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Oh, well, let me ask, is there anyone wishing to speak on public comment on this item? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2016-79. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos agreeing to share in the cost of school crossing guards with the San Carlos School District and appropriating $19,764 from the general fund for this purpose.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a quick question of staff, kind of just almost a logistical question. Is there a requirement in law that we actually specify the amount of money out to the dollar? Okay, just curious.
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocat?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item 11B, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the revised City of San Carlos Grant Program and Policy for Community Nonprofits and Establishing a Council Grant Program Subcommittee to Recommend Award of Grant Funds to Eligible Grant Applicants. Ms. Peterson?
Evening, Council.
Very cool PowerPoint template.
Thank you. Try to be unique. My name is Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager. And before you this evening is a very short presentation on the Grant Program and Policy for Community Nonprofits. So in an effort to promote local community nonprofits and serve San Carlos, the City Council has set aside funds as part of its budget. Each two- council has set aside funds as part of its budget each two years to support these efforts. For the 2016-2018 budget cycle, the council has allocated $40,000 per year for this purpose. In October, council adopted the first grant policy to ensure equity in the grant award process. However, that policy requires a few tweaks to make it feasible for the grants for the 2016-2017 fiscal year. Included in the newly proposed grant program and policy are changes to the grant application and the application review process, and the establishment of a council subcommittee to conduct the review and to recommend grant award recipients and amounts. Staff recommends that council review the draft program policy and application and either approve them as drafted or provide changes. Staff also recommends the council establish a grant program subcommittee and appoint two members of the council to review the applications, receive presentations from applicants if desired, and then recommend to the city council the recipients of the grants and the amounts to be awarded. And with that, I have time for questions and comments.
Thanks, Tara. Questions for Tara? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, good presentation. It was not so much a question, it was just a comment that I wanted to mention. I would personally be interested in surveying on the subcommittee if that was of interest to my colleagues.
Great. Do you need volunteers tonight, Mr. City Manager, or are you?
Yeah, I think we'd love to get volunteers, or, you know, sadly, you're missing a colleague, and there's a long tradition now on the city. No, I'm just kidding, Bob, wherever you are.
No, that's a great idea.
Is there anyone else?
Couldn't agree more.
Anyone else feel passionately about joining the?
Bob would be perfect.
Okay. Sounds good. So we have Bob and Mark. All right. Any other questions? Is there any public wishing to speak on this item?
I have a second.
All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2016-?
Eighty.
I figured that. A resolution of the city council of the City of San Carlos approving the revised City of San Carlos grant program and policy for community nonprofits and establishing a council grant program subcommittee consisting of initially Mark Olbert and Bob Grisilli to recommend award of grant funds to eligible grant applicants.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocut?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Okay, now we'll move on to item 11C, consideration of introducing an ordinance, amending the prohibited times and locations of the San Carlos Municipal, oh, sorry, to create a no parking zone along the east side of El Camino Real between Cherry Street and Arroyo Avenue. Mr. Walter?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director. Tonight's item, as it relates to the continuing development of the Transit Center project that is being done by SAM Trans, which is going to involve changing the, essentially, the parking area and the multimodal aspects of the existing train station and parking lot that's there. What this does, and I have a couple of other slides to illustrate this, but essentially, what we're doing is, with this project, it will develop wider sidewalks and landscaping south of the existing train station along the east side of El Camino Real. This is consistent with streetscape designs that we've seen for the Grand Boulevard Initiative and what was essentially put forward for the San Carlos piece, although we never did get the funding for it. And this has been part of the discussions of the Transit Village and the Transit Center project since they were first contemplated, that there would be the wider sidewalks, bus stop locations, and the landscaping that would complement the area that's kind of north of this location now. And so again, just as an illustration, this is sort of a rendering from the project itself. And as council can see, this is the new intersection location at Cherry Street, where a traffic signal will have the new entrance to the Transit Center. And you can see that there's a bus stop location that's built in here, and then a right-turn lane, and then wider sidewalks that continue on down south through to Arroyo. And so what's required is to introduce an ordinance for this to work, to prohibit parking on the east side of El Camino between essentially Cherry Street and Arroyo Avenue. The current ordinance has parking restricted on the east side of El Camino from Holly Street to Cherry, and this will pick that restriction up and carry it down to the end at Arroyo, where the existing underpass is for the, that plaza that we've recently built, and another bus stop for SAM Trans. And so for tonight, the council would introduce the proposed ordinance, and then adopt the ordinance at the second meeting in August when you come back, and it would go into effect after 30 days. And then, the parking would be eliminated only when construction starts to widen the sidewalk area. So there would be time continuing the parking activity now, which is predominantly commuter parking for Caltrain along that east side of El Camino Real. But eventually, when construction begins and they need to take that area, that parking will go away. So at this point, if you have questions, be happy to take them.
Thank you, Jay. Questions for Jay? Ron?
I just have one. The new parking lot, how many parking places is it going to have in comparison to what exists now? Is it going to be a net gain of parking places?
I don't know the answer to that question with numbers.
I just thought of it, and I'm sorry to throw you off. I should probably should have emailed you that beforehand.
Effectively, the parking that's being relocated from the area north of the train station, as the Transit Village develops, will translate itself to the southern area. If I remember, there's a slight net increase in parking spaces available.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's probably a good thing, because a lot of, I mean, I go there a lot, and the parking lot's frequently not very full, and there's room enough for about 30, 40 cars. And those 30, 40 cars, or 40 cars are parked on El Camino.
Right. The estimates are that the parking lot in the current configuration is about 30% occupancy. So it's a lot of extra spaces there.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Ron. Matt?
So you mentioned, Jay, that the predominance of people who use this parking, you think, are commuters. Do we have anything to justify that data, or is it, what's that based on?
Anecdotal, and experience of seeing the area, just a couple of things that play into this. Before we implemented the residential parking permit program over on the east side, this section of El Camino was not parked nearly as far down the south as it is now. So we see that that must be a direct correlation to now restricted, so they're continuing to search for the free parking. So a little bit of that may be bleeding into the area north of Holly in the neighborhood. But we think a lot of it has come across the tracks onto the east side of El Camino, and that entire space down to, basically down to Arroyo, has been filling up lately.
So tied to, I'd be interested to know, because of what Ron asked too, is, you know, we're losing the one lot because of development, and as you say, that's moving south. Just the, you know, what's the math on moving that parking lot essentially south, and then considering all of these parking spaces, are we ending up with kind of the same amount of parking, or are we ending up with more, or what's the, you know, what's the deal there?
If I remember the numbers, we don't, we don't add in the number of spaces that currently exist along El Camino into the new parking lot. So we're not ending up with basically the same number when you include the parking lot and the spaces on the street. So I think we end up losing those spaces on the street. But I think the two parking lots are equivalent in terms of how many spaces they're providing.
Okay. I guess that's something we'll have to deal with at the time, you know, because we're losing parking spaces, and those people are going to want to go somewhere.
That's correct.
So.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Any other questions? Any public wishing to speak on this item? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance number?
Fifteen-eleven.
Fifteen-eleven?
Yes.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of San Carlos amending Chapter 10.32.170, Parking, Prohibited Times and Locations of the San Carlos Municipal Code to create a no-parking zone along the east side of El Camino Real between Cherry Street and Arroyo Avenue.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Crystal, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocut?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. And now we'll move on to item 11D, consideration of adopting a resolution, adopting a memorandum of understanding between the City of San Carlos and the local 829 American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees for the period of July 16th to 2016 through June 30th, 2018. Ms. Mendenhall?
Good evening, Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is a memorandum of understanding, tentatively agreed to by the AFSMI unit, for the period of July 11th, 2016 through June 30th, 2018. This group is comprised of 31 budgeted positions, including account technicians, senior admin clerks, assistant and associate planners, associate engineers, building inspectors, civil engineering technicians and assistants, public work supervisors and inspectors, fire prevention officer, recreation coordinators and supervisors, and systems analysts and senior systems analysts. The resolution before you includes a 3% increase in base salary for all members of the unit in both years of the contract. The estimated fiscal impact of approving this contract over the two-year period is $330,000, and this amount has been factored into the budget that was adopted in June. A summary of the other key components are an increase in the alternate medical benefit to be the equivalent of the employee-only medical contribution, an increase in the dental benefit, where the maximum reimbursement amount will increase from $1,500 to $2,000 per qualified participant, an increase in the safety shoe allowance from $225 to $300 annually, and the establishment of a uniform allowance for the fire prevention officer that replaces the existing practice of the city purchasing and maintaining up to four uniforms per year. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rebecca. Questions for Rebecca? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Rebecca. Roughly speaking, what's the all-in total compensation percentage increase here?
About 3.3%.
And that's per year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The other question I had is, do we have a sense, or do you have a sense of, relative to the salary adjustments that were made a number of years ago when the city was going through its financial difficulties and whatnot, where we stand kind of in terms of average compensation with?
About average for the county?
We're about average for the county, but I guess I meant over time, are we, are we back at the level where we were before we had to make all the retrenchments, or?
This puts us pretty much back where we were, yes.
Pretty much back where we were, okay. I'd just like to say that I'm glad we have the opportunity to recognize the effort that our hard-working city employees do here, and, you know, I very much appreciate the sacrifices they made over the years. I'm glad we were able to finally get back to where we were.
Thanks, Mark. Any other questions for Rebecca? Is there any public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2016-?
Eighty-one.
I figured that, eighty-one. A resolution of the city council of the City of San Carlos adopting a memorandum of understanding between the City of San Carlos and the local 829 American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, for the period of July 11, 2016 through June 30, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocut?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. So that brings us to the end of our agenda. We're taking, getting ready to take off for our summer recess. Our next meeting is in August. As we close tonight, I wanted to note the passing of a member of the San Carlos family. And Crystal, I brought, I posted a picture, if you can bring it up. I don't know if it's working. So our former Parks and Rec director, Barry Weiss, who served the City of San Carlos for eight years from 2000 to 2008, passed away on July 2. I didn't have the privilege of knowing Barry, but I've heard from a number of people that he had a big impact on the city and touched the lives of many people, both within City Hall and residents throughout the city. Barry is credited for coming up with the original idea for the Park and Recreation Foundation, which we had a item on our agenda tonight. So I thought we would adjourn tonight and adjourn for our summer recess in appreciation for Barry's service to the city and in his memory. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.